Thank you very much. Welcome to the school committee of Wednesday, June 17. This is our reorganization meeting. Thus, the reason why the superintendent is starting the meeting, so we will get moving on that. According to the policy of the Norwood School Committee, under the amended section 1101 and section 1102, the Norwood School Committee policies and bylaws, the superintendent is in charge, charged with this responsibility, of convening the school committee for the purpose of electing a chair. Therefore, this meeting will now come to order. Nominations are now in order for the chair of the Norwood School Committee. Madam Budenhoffer?
I'd like to nominate Teresa Stewart as chair.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Dave, thank you. Are there any other nominations for chair of the school committee?
They're all shaking their heads no.
I am hearing and seeing none, so I will call for a vote. All those in favor of Mrs. Stewart for school committee chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Ananemously, so I will hand the virtual gavel over to Chairperson Stewart, and she will then go through the rest of the positions of reorganization.
Thank you. Happy to be chair for one more year, but everybody else think about next year. Start planning already, please. So at this time, we need to nominate a vice chair. So is there a nomination for a position of vice chair? David Katania?
I'd like to nominate Maev Budenhoffer for vice chair, please.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? And again, silence. So all in favor of the nomination of Ms. Budenhoffer as our vice chair?
I think we actually need a second.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to read this. It's a little confusing. Okay, is there a second to nominate Maev as vice chair?
Second.
Thank you, Emery. Okay, now, all in favor of Ms. Budenhoffer being our vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. That is unanimous. And we also have to nominate a secretary.
I nominate David Thompson.
Thank you, Maev. Was there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, David Katania. All in favor of Dr. Thompson being our secretary for the next year?
Aye.
Aye.
I will quickly hire Mrs. Oh, my God, Mrs. Dolliner to help with the managing of the minutes.
Okay. So does that wrap up our reorganization?
I think so.
That really wasn't a reorganization? All right, so moving right along. Next door to our business is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. First is the business minutes from our last meeting on June 3. Is there a motion to approve the June 3 minutes?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Joan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Emery, you can, if since you weren't there, you can abstain if you want to abstain from approving those minutes.
I read them.
Okay, so 5-0 approved. And then we have our executive session, June 3 minutes to approve as well.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Joan. All in favor of the executive session, June 3 minutes?
Aye.
Sorry, Emery.
All abstain from that one since I did not read them.
Okay, that's okay. So 4-0, one abstention with Anne Marie. And by the way, Anne Marie Masola, welcome officially to our school committee.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you.
Very happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Okay, so at this time, Dr. Thompson, was there any correspondence?
There is not, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving right along to warrants. David Katania, do you have a warrant report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Just for some reason, I thought that we have public forum, but I see it's further down.
Yeah.
Okay, so proceeding with the warrants. $10,654.65, $14,276.16, $6,683.24, $10,896.21, $8,845.92, $403,120, $23,084.24, $3,362.65, $6,476.30, $48,235.67, $41,887.58, for a grand total of $577,522.62, signed by me on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Katania. Any questions on the warrants that you signed on our behalf? Nope. And Dave, are you willing to continue to sign the warrants over the summer?
That's not a problem. Not going anywhere.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much. All right, so at this time, it's public forum, and as a reminder to the community, we do have an email address set up for public forum, and that is npschoolcommittee@norwood.k12.ma.us. So I'm checking that email now. And I have not received either before today or now any emails, but if people would like us to read anything at public forum at our next meeting, which is currently scheduled for July 22, they can email us at that email address, and it will be read during public forum then. Dr. Thompson, any announcements at this time?
I'll save it for the late agenda and the update.
Okay, great. So we have a couple of appearances this evening, and the first is Dr. Galligan here to present the high school improvement plan and also the high school handbook. So Dr. Galligan, welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all so much for having me join you this evening. I'm excited to present two documents, the first being the High School School Improvement Plan for the 2021 school year, so I'll jump in and start with that and give an overview of our four goals. As you know, we're moving towards a two-year plan. The high school is asked to be one of the schools that does one year for one more year, so that half the schools can be, you know, half the schools could be one year and half the schools could be the other year moving forward. So our school council was excited to approve this, and I am happy to present. So our goal number one, or actually, I'll run through briefly the beginning of the document. We, first page, just demographics. You can see the ongoing changing demographic of Norwood High School in terms of the demographic racial makeup. There's a shift there that you see each year. You can see our average class size relatively stable. We're waiting on that number for this year. And our mobility rate, we're still waiting on that number for this year. So as soon as we have that, I will update it. MCAS scores, we have the scores of the spring 2019 to share with you there, but as you know, there were no MCAS exams during the spring 2020. So when we do, when we are able to do that, we will, we will share that too. And then accountability report, this is the '19 accountability report. So this is what you all saw in the fall. As soon as the 2021 comes out in the fall, we'll be able to update these numbers. But we were quite happy to be able to share that we met 72% of the state-recognized goals throughout that, met our target percentage at 72%, which was a significant increase from prior years. So I'll jump in and give an overview of the four priority areas, the first being social-emotional learning. And you'll notice in here that three of our four goals are really part of what I would say is like a five-year plan for Norwood High School, in line with our district strategic objectives. And so, social-emotional learning is one that has been in here now. This will be the third year, but the action steps and the description of the goal change every year as we progress. So the goal, promote a safe, secure, and emotionally healthy learning environment for all students at NHS through a continued focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So really, what we're doing here is taking these five tenets of social-emotional learning and really focusing on the social awareness aspect. We've made tremendous progress in this area this past year, and we look forward to continuing our work with the Anti-Defamation League, our World of Difference Peer Leadership Program, to be able to continue to make strides in this extremely important area. We're excited to have 40 peer leaders at the high school who this year embarked on that journey of kind of teaching, if you will, content to their peers. And while COVID-19 kind of got away in the way of some of our plans there, the group is actually able to pivot relatively quickly, as the school community did, and create digital content for their peers to view in terms of discussions about race, religion, gender, sexuality, and the differences that we all share and the value of those differences. This is closely aligned with the district strategic plan in a couple different areas in Goal 3 and Goal 5 promoting those. Priority area number two, and I'll leave it up to the committee, but I'll explain I'm going through all four and then answering questions. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect. Priority area number two is a continuation of our work on the Portrait of the Norwood Graduate. We're really excited with how far we've come with this over the last couple of years. So the Portrait of the Norwood Graduate, as you know, is an overview of really what a Norwood student, K through 12, should be working on, and we've boiled that down to what we call the five Cs. So we have our four As, which is our mission statement of arts, athletics, academics, and activities, and finding excellence in those four areas. But with our five Cs, we're talking our students being collaborators, being creators, being communicators, being critical thinkers, and being citizens. And so when we look at that, we really look at the essential skills that students need. This past year, our staff looked at where are these skills currently taught and kind of took an inventory of that. And then they said where we'd like them to be taught at each grade level and in each content area. So each department really spent a significant amount of professional development time this past year. And next year, we will continue that work and really look to now really immerse and integrate those five Cs into the teaching and learning that happens every day. So our staff has done a great deal of work in terms of documenting and creating where exactly these five Cs are taught in each content area and at what point in a high school student's career. For example, in grade 9 ELA, you would expect a student to communicate using these four or five tenets. And then that increases and the rigor of it increases and the expectations increase each year. And our departments will continue that. We would like to continue the branding of what I just kind of said, this motto of the high school of four As, five Cs, one team. So we've adopted that as combining our mission, vision, and the method in which we do it. So that one team being the staff, the students, the families, and community members all working together to help students achieve excellence in the four As and the five Cs. So we're really excited in terms of, I think if you, we're really, Norwood High School is a special place because it's the only high school I've ever visited, worked at, anything like that, attended, where you could ask people with a mission statement, and almost everyone could tell you about it. And that's really special. And so now, we hope to build on that by saying, you know, well, what are the essential skills you're always working on? We want all students and teachers to always be able to know that too. And this really should become kind of part of the fabric of Norwood High School. Specifically with this, we're working on how do these five Cs, what do they look like in a remote or blended learning setting? So that was a, we really spent a lot of time this spring, and some of it by doing it sooner than we maybe would have planned. But as we shifted to remote learning, teachers really need to focus on the essential skills and figure out ways to move slightly away from the rigidity of content and shift and pivot to the skills focus. So that helped us in a way, and we look to continue that work. We also want to synthesize this professional development focused on cultural and global competency and inclusive classroom practices through professional development work that we'll do with Universal Design for Learning next year. We're really looking at taking that and being able to integrate that into the lessons that we create with the five Cs. Priority area number three is a continuation and growth of our focus on career pathways to enhance the NHS students' academic experience through career pathways that increase career counseling, offer exposure to relevant careers and interests, and encourage participation and career immersion experiences to make all NHS graduates future-ready. We're really excited to enter year two of our healthcare innovation pathway, which has been immensely successful, thanks to the leadership of our guidance team and especially our career counselor, Mallory Jean Nowell, a tremendous amount of work there, and our teacher, Mr. Barrell as well. We will double our enrollment this year, so this past year, we had 26 students. We'll get to at least, we anticipate, 55 to 60 students. Last month, we had 65 eighth graders attend a virtual session expressing interest in the healthcare innovation pathway. So the demand is high. We have about 25 to 30 spots. We're going to continue and increase the number of industry-recognized credentials that we can offer for students. So, for example, all of our students this year earned their industry-recognized credential through OSHA 10 certification, and getting these real tangible things that students get put on their resumes and have real, it can translate to multiple jobs in the future as well. All students took a technical course this year, and next year, we'll offer college-level courses for our students who are ready for it at the point, and as early as sophomore year, and everyone will be ready for it by junior year. We are designing a second innovation pathway in the information sector. We have been working on this for quite some time. We did apply with DESI this past fall for an innovation pathway status. We were not selected in the first round. We were invited to reapply. Ultimately, this was a blessing in disguise, and as the spring unfolded, we decided not to reapply. We didn't want to force it, if you will, and we didn't want to open up a second pathway in a remote learning setting. And so this allows us to spend a little bit more time perfecting our healthcare innovation pathway and going back to the drawing board a little bit to be able to focus on what is the best way to launch this information pathway and propose it next year. You'll notice at the bottom of Goal 3, one of the pieces is to attract a diverse cohort of students in all career pathways, where really, that's a significant goal of innovation pathways and career pathways through the Department of Education, is to be able to have these cohorts be reflective of your school's demographics. And so we're definitely trending in that direction, and we're really happy that next year's cohort will be a very diverse group. We will be conducting a needs assessment, and this could have been its own goal, but you'll see it embedded in a couple spots throughout this improvement plan. A needs assessment of the Norwood High School schedule, that's underway. We have 20 staff members involved in a schedule committee that are researching elements of effective schedules. We finished Phase 1, which is identifying Norwood High School's needs. We're moving into Phase 2, which is looking at what's out there in terms of how other schools in the area and beyond have identified needs and then solved them through scheduling. And we will be analyzing options later in the fall, moving into Phase 3, and Phase 4 will be early next winter, in which we anticipate making the decision whether or not we will propose a new Norwood High School schedule for launch in the fall 2021. By schedule, I mean bell schedule, but not just when classes meet and how long they are, but also how often do electives meet, how frequently do all courses meet, how much credit are courses worth. All of those types of aspects will be important considerations. And priority area number four is a new one, and I hope to God it's a one-year one, but this is to plan for a safe reopening of schools and a remote blended learning atmosphere. So this is very much in line with the district work going on, but participating in various reopening committees to analyze options for health and safety, curriculum design and revision, professional development, implementing sound health and safety protocols to present the spread of COVID-19 in Norwood High School. Obviously, that's district beyond too, but the high school's more complex. We've got more people. We've got a complex schedule. There's a lot of moving parts. And prepare and implement a flexible instructional model that can move from a face-to-face model, a fully remote model, or anywhere in between with relative ease. Ease is the wrong word, but relative ease. And then create a flexible master schedule that will maximize teaching and learning under this instructional model. So we've already looked, for example, to be able to find efficiencies in teacher schedules. So for example, instead of a teacher having three preps and teaching three different types of classes, moving that to two, or two to one, to be able to have them really be able to focus on what is to come and the amount of planning that will be necessary and the amount of teamwork that will be necessary. And the last one, I believe, is an underrepresented, underrepresented aspect of school reopening, but perhaps the most important one, is to identify enhanced mental health supports to assist staff and students with mental health issues associated with the reopening of schools in COVID-19. As we know, there's a whole host of mental health issues that existed prior to COVID-19, and the landscape in that has changed quite a bit since March. And while we always felt like we had a really good pulse on our students and knew what level of students, what level of supports individual students needed in terms of their mental health, we know that that will have changed, well, that has changed for some students. And we're preparing for that and how to identify the level of support that students need and how to meet that need, both through professional development planning and effective communication. The last two pages, I won't go over in detail, but you know, you have our professional development expected outline and a review of our priority areas, three of which are similar to what you see here. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions about Norwood High School School Improvement Plan for 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan. I already emailed you my questions, and you answered mine. But do the other school committee members have any questions or feedback for Dr. Galligan tonight? Is there a motion to approve the school improvement plan for Norwood High School?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maev. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. Dr. Galligan, you want to take us through your handbook?
Absolutely. Thank you all for your support on the school improvement plan. I will, I'll move through primarily for the handbook, the document that is the summary of changes, unless you want to read a 60-page handbook tonight. So hang on one second. So really, not many significant changes this year. We had more last year. So this year was just, I would call, maintenance and improvement in a couple areas. So throughout, just general housekeeping updates, numbers, pages, and some of that still needs to be updated, so please bear with us there. But getting into the meat of it, on page 8, we added the Portrait of the Norwood Graduate document to be able to signify the importance of that. So it's in this important document for students. On page 16 and 17, we updated the athletic eligibility to reflect current MIA language, so that's not an internal change. That's a kind of annual changes that happen at the MIA level, and we always look to make sure we're in line with that. So we just shifted the updated language over there. Page 31, a very minor tweak, but added one week to the timeline for doctor's orders, parent permission slips, and medication to be filed with the school nurse in advance of field trips. This is especially important for overnight or out of state or out of country field trips, which we have many. So just allowing the nurses' time to make sure that we have everything collected and we're doing everything properly and safely. We added that one-week piece, so it's a longer lead-up time than they previously had. Numbers 5, 6, and 7 really go together, so I'll tackle them together. This is a revamp of the, of what is now our academic integrity policy, which was previously listed in a couple different spots in the handbook as cheating and plagiarism separately. And we decided at this point that it made a lot of sense to put this together under the umbrella of academic integrity and try to flesh out in an informational way, as a resource for students, what they should be aware of, but also as a resource for students, what constitutes a violation of academic integrity. And it could be cheating, it could be plagiarism, but there's other, there's other things. And so we tried to spell that out in there, and we also tried to spell out the consequences from a progressive discipline standpoint that go along with it. We revised that to include kind of as an issue of, as a violation of academic integrity became more severe or repeated, that the consequences, I would say, fit the offense more appropriately. We have removed suspension as an option unless it's very severe or repeated many times. That would be really a last resort, and that's in line with state recommendations in terms of saving suspension for really unsafe behaviors. And while a violation of academic integrity is not good, it is not usually unsafe. And there, we want to approach this both from an educational standpoint, but also from a, provide consequences when it is necessary. So we felt like an overhaul of that section was needed, and so that's what we did. And the last, pretty minor change is on page 48, and that's as part of the Norwood High School search policy. So this adds a sentence in there that states refusal to allow such a search will result in disciplinary action and possible police intervention. This is again, a last resort, but something like this was not in there before. And in the event that we felt like a student was in possession of something that isn't safe, we need to be able to know that we can, can look for that thing. And while the policies previously identified that, there was no such clause that said, if a student denied it, what should happen, right? And so we wanted to add that in there so that we, we have that if we need it, but it's extremely, extremely rare that anything like that would need to happen. So that's a summary of our changes for the handbook, relatively minor, but I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan. Any questions from the committee? No? Is there a motion to approve the high school handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Maev. Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, thank you, Joan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 5-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. So moving along to our next appearance, it's extended day. Did Ms. Capizio join us again?
I'm not sure if she's there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see her.
Do we make a motion to move it till she arrives?
I don't know if you want to go over the profit and loss that I did the analysis, or if you want to wait for her. It's up to you.
Yeah, I think, because we do have quite a lot to cover, but I also want to make sure we're not bouncing around too much. So Karen, if you could start with the documents that you prepared, and then when Ms. Capizio joins us, we can have her presentation.
All right. So I gave you one that starts, there's a packet that starts off with the extended day rates, and then the second page is the FY19.
Did we just lose Karen?
But we gained press.
Karen, are you back?
I'm on the phone.
I'm going to talk from the phone and get off of here, because I think that would be easier.
Since there's no second, I nominate Chris Capizio as vice chair.
Do you want me to continue then?
All right, we'll go ahead and take a vote on that then, starting with Cheryl Dorn.
Can you guys hear me? Okay?
I can. There's just some background noise.
Chris, I think you need to mute.
Yeah.
Am I unmuted here?
You are unmuted. I think we can hear some background in your, from where, from your location.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm muting right now.
All right, can you guys hear me now?
We can, Karen. Go ahead.
All right, I'm sticking with the All right, I'm, I'm sticking with the phone here. Okay, so it's FY19, FY20, extended day profit and losses, the header at the top. So I was going to go through that scenario with you. So I started off the analysis looking at FY19 extended day, and if you look at the FY19 extended day, they started off with a beginning balance of 162,000, about approximately $162,000. They had a revenue of 641,149, salaries 615,624, expenses of 124,680, which gave them a profit and loss of a negative of 100,155. They ended the year with 61,855, but basically because of the fact they started off with a 162,000 for their beginning balance. I separated out with summer and school year to see the profit and loss with the summer and the school year, and with the information that was in Munis, it appeared that the summer program was the problem. The summer problem was just unsustainable with the revenue. That ended up with a loss of 108,151. So that was FY19. Then I went over to FY20, and I did the same thing. Unfortunately, with FY20, we had some scenarios where you had the COVID-19, so I decided I'd do the analysis where I'd do it looking at what, what the profit and loss would be with the COVID-19, and then I'd look at it and see, well, what if it, we didn't have the COVID-19 closure, and we'll see, you know, what it, what, an estimate of what it might have been. So the profit and loss with the COVID-19, again, you started with the beginning balance of 61,855 from the previous year. You had a revenue of 562,315, you had salaries of 538,111, expenses of 81,057, which gave you a loss of 56,853, a year-end balance of approximately 5,000. But this was with the shutdown, which the COVID shutdown date was March 13th, and so the rent for that program was only charged through February due to the shutdown, so they, they also had a loss, a lot of loss of revenue, so that was one of the reasons why we decided to only charge and rent through February with the closed down, with the closure. And not only that, 153,945 of payroll, this program could not sustain, so that went to the town and the COVID-19 fund. So you'll see, that's with the COVID-19 situation. So then I said, okay, well, what would happen if we, everything had been the same? So if, and the COVID-19 had not shut down? So if we looked at the FY20 without the shutdown, the analysis indicated that you still, you would have had a loss of about 160,188, ended up with a negative balance of 98,333. It, the revenue just could not sustain the payroll and the expenses that you would have had that year. Then I decided, okay, so that's with the $4 an hour fee. I also broke it down again with summer and school year, and when I broke it down, summer and school year, the summer, again, had a larger loss, that had the negative 105,148, whereas the regular school year program, it was still a loss, but not as high as the summer, so that was 55,040. So then I said, okay, so if we raised the rate to $5 an hour, which is the scenario that Kristen is bringing to the committee tonight, where would we be with this analysis? So I just took the revenue and added 25% to the revenue, and if you had added that 25% to the revenue, then that summer program in this particular scenario would give you a loss of 95,834, but then it's offset by a positive balance, a profit in the school year program, so you're almost at a break-even point if you had added that 25% to your fees at this point. So that, the, the analysis, in my mind, clearly shows that the program needs to increase its rates. You just, you would, if this year, it would have been a loss no matter what, you would have had a loss, but if COVID-19 hadn't happened, you still were, you still were heading down a road to have, to bill out this program. So in, in my mind, the $5 an hour increase is definitely merited, you need it for this program, not only to sustain, sustain the program, but there's, there's no room at all for any type of improvement with this program. You, your baili can keep it afloat. So that was the analysis on what I had with the figures that we had for 19 and 20. I, I don't have the figures to go back any further, but I felt like 19 and 20 kind of had the picture anyways, kind of showed you the picture of where you were with that. The, the, we also did some, which I'm going to let Kristen go over with that, unless she'd like me to go over it, but I worked with Kristen on helping her to develop a projection, a budget and a projection of her profit and loss for the summer program, as well as the extended day, regular school year program. With the extended day, regular school year program, we did it where if you kept the current $4 an hour fee, what would, what would that look like? And then we also looked at it, if we increased it the 25%, again, what would that look like? So the first scenario that we did was our current salary structure, $4 an hour, we're keeping everything the same, and with her new budget, and it ended up that you had a loss, not a really large loss, but you still were going to have a loss, and, and this, again, was not giving you the money to improve her program, and, you know, to improve her program, you know, go forward with her salary structure and everything. So, so then we decided we would look at it with the new salary structure of the $4 an hour, you still had a loss, and so this is where I'm going to let Kristen come in, and she can show where, if she does her FY21 school year with her new salary structure, she increases the 25% fee for her program to $5 an hour, then she can share with you that this is where she'd be able to have a profitable program, and also be able to do the improvements that she wants to do for her program. One other thing I would like to say about this analysis for the, for the FY21, the analysis was done with the rent that we would charge her would only be the rent for the Savage Center. We would not increase the rate for FY21 for the, for the other space that she intends to use, which is the Prescott and the Cleveland. However, we would be charging her 0.50 of a custodian because of the, in particular, with the COVID, you're going to have, to have a custodian doing an awful lot more cleaning. So we felt like if we give the 0.50 of a custodian, then for this analysis, we'll just keep the rent the same, because we're charging for the 0.50 of the custodian. And then also, again, Kristen has her extended day summer budget, program budget, which she can go over that with you. And Kristen, if you need any assistance from me, I'm right here, but I'm going to let you go over your budget that you developed.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and of course, the opportunity to review this once more, and thank you, Karen, for such a thorough and in-depth recap, and also getting us all up to speed as to where we are now. I think in addition to what Karen mentioned, I also want to note that not only is the program having difficulty breaking even, let alone evolving, but, you know, as a four-pay program, we were having difficulty sustaining any kind of emergency funds, and as COVID revealed, having emergency funds for our program is necessary. Sort of blanket business advice would be to have at least two months of operating spend, expenses in some kind of savings, and, and we really are not even at a point where we can, where we can get there. So I'm going to share with you, if it's okay, I'm going to share with you the, the revised PowerPoint presentation, which addresses feedback from the committee based on our last meeting, so is now a good time to do that?
That'd be great.
Please let me know when you can see it. It's starting. I'm looking okay now? Can you see it?
It says, yeah, it's, it's loading.
Okay.
I see the slide now.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, wonderful. So we took the school committee's feedback and, and essentially slowed the rate of increase. I, I believe originally we approached with $6 per hour from $4 per hour. We understand, one, in light of the current conditions, in light of what might be some pretty serious economic setbacks, that we, we not even sure we, we can fully analyze for the fall, that we want to slow that rate of increase to the $5 per hour per child, which was the suggestion from the committee. So what we're looking at here is the first screen, these are our present rates. We, you know, to review quickly, the $2, two days a week for one month is 96, three days a week is 144, four days 192, and five days 240. And again, for all families who have more than one child enrolled, there is a 10% discount overall. So even as we continue through this, you know, sort of modest incremental increase, we're still talking about the offer of the 10% sibling discount for every, for, for essentially every tier, two through five days. In the next school year, we'd be looking at $5 per hour per child. This was the base level jump for us to address the 13-year gap since the original rate, so we have not, again, increased the rate in 13-plus years, and so our first rate increase would be to $5 per hour per child. That would look like two days a week. I apologize for my dog in the background there, I thought that would happen. Okay, just a moment now. It's not going to go away, I'm going to move. The FedEx guy is, they're going after him. Okay, well, I don't know if you can see my backyard here, but that's where we are. So, okay, I'll just hold it up. So the, yes, the $5 per hour per child takes us to 120 for two days, for three days 180, for four days 240, and for five days 300, and this will permit us to open that one additional site, which is the Prescott site in, in the next school year. In 2022, so in the next school year, we'd be looking at a 5.5, so 50 cent increase from the previous year. Again, the rates would increase nominally based on the 50 cent increase, and it would allow us to open at one more site again, which we would hope would be the bulge, but of course, more assessment is necessary. In 2023, we would be looking at the $6 per hour per child, that would be, again, two years from the original increase, and we'd be looking at, again, one more site opening. In 2024, we would be looking at $6.50 per hour per child, again, respectively, the increases two days, three days, four days, and five days per week, and again, another site opening concordant with that increase. And in 2025, we'd be looking at where we are at a sort of base level of market value for per hour per child extended day, which, if you remember the five-town analysis that we did, the $7 per hour per child was the minimum number per hour per child of all five districts. So that is the, that's the update on the rates. Before I move forward, does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, Joe.
So does that include the summer?
Yes. So this is, all of the rates are consistent with what we would offer across the board, so for vacation weeks and for summer programming as well.
So how much would a five-day, how much would the February vacation program cost at your new rates?
One of the things to recognize as well is that in the past, the program was operating at 10-hour days, and a 10-hour day is, it may not be sustainable for the program, and so I think we need to look at moving from a 10-hour-a-day offering to an eight-hour-a-day offering. If we did that, starting with this year, let me go back. So an eight-hour day with $5 per hour would essentially be $40 per day, and then, of course, we have to consider whether COVID would put an impact on us to offer additional PPE, so if we had additional PPE that we had to compensate for, that might be an additional $5 a day charge. So still around $45 per day. Looking at the 550, again, it would be 550 times eight, and then eight times five, or however many days the child was enrolled.
So what would the, what would the change be from this, from the current rate?
It would be $4 per hour, so this year, in the, in this, in the current year, we, we operated at $10, I mean, excuse me, at 10 hours, and so it was $4 times 10 hours, so it was $40 per day.
So in the next.
Karen, are you asking about the summer, the summer program, and what she's going to charge for this, if she has summer programs for this year?
What I'm saying is that this presentation just contains information about extended day after school, and there are extended day vacation programs and extended day summer programs that I would like to see the information about.
I, I believe it is in the presentation, unless I uploaded the wrong presentation.
I did not see that.
No, we, we haven't.
I have a spreadsheet on the summer, if.
Sorry, it's all my mistake.
Yes, I just wanted to know if you had questions regarding the tuition increase for, overall, for extended day, based on the, the four or five slides that I showed, and if, if no questions about that, then I can go ahead and move forward.
Sorry, my mistake.
No, no, no worries. So here we have the vacation weeks and summer programming. This here shows, over here in the corner there, the 2020 shows what we are at currently, charging just about $40 per day, plus the $25 registration fee per child. In 2021, we would be looking at the, if, if we are approved for the rate increase, it would be $5 per hour per child. Again, that $10 per hour would be adjusted for eight, eight hours, you know, eight hours is a standard workday, is sort of the standard number of hours that are offered during all camps and, and vacation programming, so that would be adjusted. So it'd be eight times, excuse me, that'd be, yes, eight times five, which would be 40, plus the $25 registration fee, plus the personal protective gear if we need it. In 2022, it would be the 5.5 per hour times $8, excuse me, times eight hours and $44 per day, with the $25 registration fee per child. In 2023, it would be $6 per hour times eight hours, $48 per day, with the $25 registration fee per child. And in 2024, it would be the $6.50 per hour times eight hours, sorry about that, would be, but just about $56 per day, $25 registration fee. So again, we're not looking at adjusting any of the registration fees, it would just be the standard rate that we offer during the school year, which is then applied to the vacation care and camp.
Are there questions at this time?
Did you, did you want to bring up the FY21 extended day summer program budget? That's the one that, if you look at the packet, there's one that, the top says FY21 extended day summer program budget, and it looks like a profit and loss, just like I went over earlier.
If you'd like, I can stop sharing and, and bring up that budget as well and share on the screen, would that be helpful?
It might be helpful to finish this and then go back to the stuff, let's finish one thing.
Okay.
Yep, that sounds great. So the, the tuition schedule increase, this is, you know, what we, what we underwent in order to get to the point where we recognized that a tuition increase was necessary, and here is what, you know, we anticipate that it will address. You know, this is something which is standard for the childcare industry, we're operating on a budget that's outmoded at this point, and that this, that the review of the tuition is something that we do need to do every couple of years to ensure that we're keeping consistent with cost of living expenses, operational expenses, and. we're keeping consistent with cost of living expenses, operational expenses, and ensuring that the program is able to offer a, you know, a market value experience for Norwood Public Schools students. We're also keeping into consideration the early education regs. You know, their standards are between the 13 and 15-to-1 ratio for all classrooms, first through fifth grade. We try to maintain a 10-to-11-to-1 ratio for our kindergarten classrooms, again, consistent with EEC. We also want to ensure that the number, the amount of time per day that a teacher is alone in the classroom or outside with students is very low. And so that, again, would require an additional staff member, an assistant teacher or an aide. Our classroom capacity right now looks at just about 26 to 34 students per room. We understand the Cleveland capacity is capped at 40 students, and so, and that's also only grades one through three. So currently, we have a Cleveland waitlist, and we also have the fourth and fifth graders at the Cleveland who are coming to the Savage Center. We're looking at the Prescott site opening in the fall of 2020, and we're currently enrolled at 50 students, and that's also K through five. So that's pretty lovely. That's, you know, that's the entire span of elementary school. And then again, we're looking at opening sites, not just in the new school year, but then also in subsequent school years until we are across the district. This is a sort of blanket budget for what it would cost to open a new site in light of our present budget, which is that we average about 60 students. So we'll need about four staff members there. And this is sort of the total that we need for, you know, for funding the staff at that site, plus the administrator. We are looking at, you know, introducing some infrastructure, so storage cabinet, file cabinet, any chairs or rugs that are needed, art supplies, books, cleaning supplies, clearly, sports equipment. We'll also be looking at offering snacks, something that really wasn't offered in the past is snack for all students. And so we know that, you know, parents don't always remember to give children snack on their way to extended day, or some cannot give snack every day to their kids for the after-school time. And so we need to be budgeting for snack across our after-school sites. Again, the rent paid is an average for the new school year, and I think Karen mentioned that that will be adjusted. Currently, it's, currently, we pay 68.80. So I think that, you know, it might be somewhere around there for the fall. We are expected to take two field trips during the school year at the Cleveland site for parent-teacher conferences, so I'm not sure if that's going to take place at the Prescott as well. We are looking again at the introduction of Chromebooks, which we realize now with COVID how instrumental technology is to supporting students and their academic needs. So we would need Chromebooks for the fall. We also want to continue with our enrichment programming, so we're looking at, you know, offering that across our sites, not just at the Savage Center. And then the bottom is a prospect of whether there were 30 full-time enrolled students and 20 part-time enrolled students, you know, what that site would be taking in monthly. So those, that just gives us a sort of ballpark estimate. And I think I'm going to put my laptop down now. I've been holding it the entire time, so I have to just put it right now on this table. Can you hear my voice? My voice is wavering because my muscles are giving out.
Well, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Chris. Before we move on to the other spreadsheet that Karen had started to reference, are there questions from the committee on anything else that was just shared? Yeah, Joan?
I'm curious why the number of hours is going to go from 10 to 8.
Well, that's a really good question. One of the first concerns that we have is whether we could sustain our labor budget at $10, I mean, at 10 hours per day. And I think we recognize from summers past where the summer program was 10 hours per day, that the labor budget exceeded our revenue. And so, and I think also consistent with what other programs are offering within Norwood Public Schools, eight hours is the standard workday for camps and for vacation cares. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't offer an extended time. That might be a separate rate structure. You know, for instance, we do have occasionally parents who have late pickup, and for that reason, you know, we have a different rate structure for parents who aren't able to make it, you know, by the 5 o'clock mark. So that could be something that we consider.
So I just, you know, I'm going to go back to the summer guidelines right now. We're going to need to have a custodian in the program, and the requirement is that the bathroom is sanitized after every single use.
Right.
To have it beyond 10 hours, we're going to get into significant overtime and increased personnel costs with that.
But this proposal is not for COVID, though. This proposal is a general proposal, correct?
Well, when we bring up our summer program, when we bring up our summer program budget, it's absolutely in consideration of COVID. And I think I, I think I showed you on the PowerPoint presentation, the slide where we were discussing the vacation camp rates, one of those had a PPE sort of caveat, because we don't know whether we're going to have to add costs for sanitization and other protective.
So you're, so if a vaccine was found tomorrow, you're telling me we would, this would convert back to a 10-hour-a-day experience?
I think it's worth discussing. I personally think an eight-hour-a-day summer camp and an eight-hour-a-day vacation care camp for students is an appropriate amount of time.
Has there been a needs assessment done with parents who rely on these services?
We have not, no. So it's worthy, it's worth discussing for the future.
Maya, I think you have a question?
Yeah, so I guess a few comments. One is that I definitely am in favor of increasing the fee to $5 an hour. I think that's entirely reasonable. It's still less than many neighboring districts charge. And, you know, looking at your budget, it seems that roughly 80% of your budget is salaries, which is exactly what I would expect. And of course, in the last 12 years, since you've made an increase in the, in the fee, minimum wage has increased, a lot of labor costs have increased. So I am 100% in favor of that. One thing I had a question about was Karen, you mentioned that instead of charging the program rent for the Prescott and the Cleveland, you were proposing charging the program for one half-time custodian. And I'm wondering, is that actually in keeping with our rental policies? I'm looking at policy KF, and it's a little unclear to me, because it's hard to know exactly where extended day fits into this. I mean, a lot of this, this policy makes it very clear what you do for a PTO meeting and what you do for, like, the Norwood Basketball Association and what you would do for a for-profit dance studio that wanted to rent the auditorium. But it's unclear to me how the rent at the Savage was set originally, and that space of course, that the Savage is completely dedicated to extended day and cannot be used for anything else. Whereas at the, at the elementary schools, there's, you know, that cafeteria and gyms are obviously used dur, during the school day, and so the extended day would be using it for a much shorter amount of time. But by hosting extended day there, we do incur additional expenses in the schools. And so just wanted to understand what your recommendation is and how that lines up with our school committee policies.
Excuse me. With the, you're talking about the 0.5 all full-time custodial services in lieu of raising the rent?
Yes.
Is that what, OK. Well, if the fact, one of the reasons that we put that in now was given, given the COVID-19, and we knew we had to have a custodian there all day long. Because when they, when they use the facilities, the custodian has to clean the facilities after each time. So it's not, it's not like we can have a custodian there at the beginning and the end of the program. They're going to have to sit there pretty much the whole day long to make sure there's somebody available. And the, the cost of that is going to be almost $25,000 a year for that. So that was, that was the reasoning behind, well, let's see if we charge the half-time custodian here with this $5 an hour increase, but we can certainly revisit it. The, the other reason, I'm not sure why, but the, I believe they're already in the Cleveland, or no, they already in the Cleveland right now? And my, from talking to Paul, I'm not sure that they ever included the Cleveland in the rent. I think they only rent, that was included was the Savage Center.
So I was going to ask my same question, is, is that in compliance with our school committee policies?
I'm going to have to review it and get back to you, but that's, that was the reasoning we thought with more going forward with the summer program and the COVID-19 situation. But I mean, I certainly can look into that further and see, but I don't know why, I guess I wasn't positive on why they weren't charging for the Cleveland, but they did charge for the Savage Center.
To the best of my knowledge, when that started a year ago, the school committee had no decision-making in terms of what rent would be charged. So I think it should just be, you know, that, that wasn't something that we determined. And yet, I do think we should, do have policies in that area.
I'd like to say something about the, the rent, if I could, regarding the Cleveland site. And I'm sorry to interject. I think it needs to be taken into consideration, not just the space that we utilize at these sites, but what kinds of restrictions and caps perhaps school leaders put on the volume at these sites, which restrict the amount of revenue that we can make there. As an example, we only are able to enroll 40 students at the Cleveland site and, and only first through third grade. And so that, that is a significant limitation, and I imagine lower wear and tear on the building, say, for instance, if we had 75 or 80 students at the site.
One other thing, Maya, is, and I definitely agree with you, we have to look into that. And, but the, if we charge them, like, right now, when I worked it out for the Savage Center, they would be in charge about 80 cents a square foot. And if we charge them the rent for the Prescott and the Cleveland, it, it's going to be, the Prescott, we figured out, I did this with Paul, I got the square footage on, an approximate square footage on those two areas, in the Prescott and the Cleveland, it would be another $50,000 for the Prescott and another $49,000 for the Cleveland. And that's at that lower cost per square foot of about 0.80. And I'm not, I think that the, increasing the rent for those three programs, I'm not sure this program would be able to sustain it even with the $5 hour increase. So it's definitely something that we're going to have to look into.
I definitely think that there's a big difference between using the Cleveland cafeteria and gym for three hours in the afternoons as opposed to occupying the Savage space, you know, the entire day when there's no other. So I don't think that it should just be based on a square foot thing, but it's also true that the, the schools have rented out our gyms to, like, Nord U Soccer and things like that. And if extended day is there, then that means that we no longer have that option to rent to other programs. So I just think that this is something that we need to consider.
What I understand, particularly from the Cleveland site and from talking to all of the staff at the Cleveland site, is that all programming that takes place at the school, whether it's Girl Scouts or tumbling toddlers or whatever extra programming comes into that school, extended day needs to make accommodations for and needs to move. So frequently, extended day does not have access to the gym, does not have access to other parts of the building because they are occupied by the special programming. And, and, and so I just, I want to look at that as well, because if we will, if we are going to pay for the gym, and then other program is paying as well for the gym, that's a duplication.
Yeah. And one other thing, I, it's, there is two other sheets in the analysis I did. When I talked to Paul about the rent, the normal rent for the vendors is $11 to $13 per square foot. So the extended day, it's being charged much less the square foot for the Savage Center than the others. And because when I went over it with Paul, he indicated that. I said, well, approximately how much are the other vendors paying? He said 11 to 13 per square foot. So we definitely can look into the rent for them.
Did you have another question, Maya, or, because I think Dave, because I know you did, but I didn't want to.
No, I'm all set.
OK, OK. Sure, Dave? No, you're, OK, Joan?
I have, I have two more questions. One, the $2,000 for the field trips? I'm not, I don't, I'm not understanding that. Is that, because parents pay extra for field trips for extended day? So is that to subsidize the cost of it, or is?
That's right, yeah.
Do you know approximately how much that would subsidize the cost of the field trips?
We, that's not to subsidize the cost of field trips universally. That's to subsidize the cost of two specific field trips that we are mandated to take our kids on, and therefore are not charging parents and haven't charged parents in the past in the, in the history of the program. From the time that the after-school program has been at the Cleveland site, when parent-teacher conferences take place, I think it's twice per year, we are, we are ordered to leave, we're mandated to leave, and so we have to take a field trip on the two parent-teacher conference days. And, and then we haven't charged parents for those two days because they don't have an option.
Oh, I have definitely paid an extra fee at the Cleveland for a field trip, and I'm not sure if it was for parent-teacher conferences or if it was for an election day or something else. So that's why I was confused as to why that price was being added in there. And then my second question was, there's a close to a 16 or 17% increase in the admin salaries that go from, that are factored into the budget from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21?
Is that for, are you looking at the summer budget, or?
I am looking at, this was one of Karen's spreadsheets, so maybe Karen can talk about this. It's the, they're all linked so closely in the thing. It's the Excel spreadsheet where we went through the fiscal year 1920 profit-loss, and then the fiscal year '21 projected profit-loss, and then the summer projections. It's in the tab titled Fiscal Year '21 Projected Profit Loss.
What I think that might address is the, is the request, my current contract is for 30 hours a week, so I'm, I'm a part-time employee for extended day, certainly working full-time hours. And, and as we look at expansion across the district, I think what that number represents is moving from a 30-hour-per-week schedule to a 35-hour-per-week schedule or 34-hour-per-week schedule. I think that's part of it. But I'll let Karen speak to the rest of it.
The spreadsheet that, with the FY21 Extended Day Program projected profit and loss, that is, that is what we did with the director salary. We did an estimate of increasing the salary for both Deb and for her assistant. The, the, the budget for both this FY21 Extended Day Program and the next one that says FY21 Extended Day Summer Program budget, those were the expenditures and the revenue is estimates that Kristen gave me on what she felt her budget would be for FY21 and for the FY21 summer. The, if you look at the detail, especially on FY21 Extended Day Summer Program budget, if you look below, you'll see some notes on how she came up with the revenue. She explained to me how she came up with the revenue for it. She explained to me that, that we, we went over the salaries, would be three bi-weeklies for the director, for the assistant director. She has 13 employees at approximately $20 an hour, 40 hours a week, times six weeks for the staff. We did 1.5 months of rent for her, we did the custodian. And then she's basing this on 85 students. And that's what was her analysis, that she's, that she would have 85 students. And with the 85 students and the budget that she, that she went over with me with these expenditures and the increase in the salaries, her profit and loss is about $9,648 with 85 students. So.
Right.
With, if the revenue goes down, but depending on what her expenditures are, so this is based on her projections on what she felt she could get with the number of students.
So by adopting the new salary structure, have we agreed to increasing that salary by 17% for the school year? And then, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, in the summer, there's an additional salary that's paid. So the fiscal year '21 projected profits and loss is talking just about the school year, that's the salary that's paid. And then in addition, there's a salary that's paid in the summer. So that both those salaries combined were the, are the annual salary.
Right.
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, with the analysis, what we did. Yeah, with the analysis, what we did was we just took that, um, salary and put, um, the three bi-weekly pays for Chris and her assistant in the summer portion. And then we, we put that twenty-three bi-weekly pays into the regular school year.
So if I wanted an understanding of how much Chris made in a year, I would combine those two numbers.
Yes, so that's what we did. We took, we figured that was six weeks would be three bi-weekly pays. So that's how we estimated the summer portion versus the regular school year por- portion.
Right.
Okay.
In the.
Yeah, she's also, um, she's also with the, in her summer program, um, she's char- that she's got the summer application fee of twenty-five dollars a student and she's also charging five dollars a day, um, per student for summer PPE. Um, so, um, that was part of the revenue that she's suggesting. So five dollars for, um, PPE per day, that twenty-five dollars application fee and then the five dollars an hour, um, for the revenue.
Right.
Pays. We also, in the summer, I did the one point five of the rent because she started the summer program mid-July. So we only did one point five, trying to get an idea of approximately what a profit and loss would be for the summer program. And, and, and then of course, we added the custodian because of, the custodian had to be there for the entire day. So that's how we came up with that summer program budget. But again, if she does not get the eighty-five students, then this is a projection on eighty-five students.
Right. So you would, we would have to reduce staffing per day in accordance to, uh, the number of students that are enrolled. And, and really that should have been done i- in summers past. Um, you know, we, we, the summer program cannot offer a standard number of hours to our part-time employees. The nu- the number of hours and number of staff that we have um, has to be tied to the number of students that we have enrolled.
So to kind of frame all the conversations, the great conversations and the questions that we're having, um, what we are being asked to do and, and, um, Dr. Thompson and, and Ms. Pizzi, I would share it and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it's first and foremost vote on the fee increase that was presented to us, starting with this summer, right? The fee would increase, be this summer.
Beginning this fiscal year, seven-one.
Yep, throughout, um, what you just took us through on the presentation, um, which was through twenty-twenty-five. Um, and my understanding is that if we do not increase the fees, starting with seven-one, we do not have a self-sustaining program.
Right.
Right, and we would not.
That's what I believe.
We would not be able to run the summer program at all.
And, and, and if we do not increase fees, then we know for sure the summer program cannot, cannot run. If we do increase the fees as proposed tonight, that gives the summer program the chance to run. But in this COVID area and the extra regulations and everything we have to follow, we do need at least eighty-five students to run it. But even before we can sign up eighty-five students, we need to increase the fee to five dollars an hour. Am I correct so far?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, 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 and just to give people an idea of what that will look like, they have to be in groups of ten with two adults. They cannot mix at all. They cannot mix spaces. They cannot mix groups.
Right.
Okay. It has to be cleaned every single time they use the bathroom. So it's pretty restrictive for how this, um, program would need to run in order to be within the state guidelines.
I, I'm really struggling with combining these two things because what we are doing, we're not setting rates for COVID. We're setting rates for our program for the next, forever, right? Like we're setting up new structures for the rates forever. I think for me personally, it makes more sense to talk about what the rate should be without the PPE and then add a fee to handle the PPE and the COVID stuff. Uh, because we're, we're mixing these two things together and I don't think that that is a good way to make a decision.
I, what, what's happening? I hear what you're saying, but I, that's not how I'm perceiving it. So I think the increase to five dollars an hour is a conversation that started months ago.
Yeah, I agree.
COVID-19 became a thing.
I agree, but we need to stop talking about custodian, extra custodian costs and PPE in this conversation then. Because if we're having the conversation about raising the rates to five dollars an hour, that's entirely separate from the conversation around PPE. And increased, and increased, um, custodial costs.
Right. Fee in the budget for the, for PPE and other costs for the summer program.
I think if you look at the, the first analysis that I did, where, that I went over with you, where we looked at nineteen and twenty. And, and then I did it, well, if we kept everything the same without the COVID-19 and we added the five dollars an hour, it was almost a, a break even. So that, that to me shows that you do need the five dollars an hour. Now going forward, how much will this program need per hour? In my opinion, the five dollars an hour is very clear to me right now, but the future, I'm not sure. So do we wait a year and, and increase to five dollars this year and then reevaluate this program? Because y- y- you do have a budget here that, um, Kristen is, is, um, coming forward with that. I guess that's, i- in my, for me, I feel like it's a little too soon to go forward with like a four-year plan or a five-year plan. I think it needs a year to see, is this the budget that she's gonna be able to sustain? Is this the revenue she's going to be able to get? I mean, it's very clear to me that the five dollars an hour i- i- needs to happen because even taking away the COVID-19, you still needed that five dollars an hour to sustain it this year.
Right, right. Thank you much, Sharon. Um, Maya?
So I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept the five dollar an hour fee, n- new fee and, um, to accept the salary structure as, um, Ms. Capizio has proposed.
And, and just to clarify, Maya, um, the five dollar, um, fee increase for one, for one year, right? You're not, um, to just start with one year is what you're saying?
Right, just to set that as, as the rate going forward and obviously it can be revisited next year.
Okay, okay. And, and effective seven-one, the five dollar rate effective seven-one, okay. So, um, five dollar an hour, effective seven-one, and also the salary, um, organization, um, salary proposal that Ms. Capizio shared with us, is there a second on that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave. Is there further discussion? Joan?
I am not in favor of the motion, um, and there's two reasons why. One, it represents a twenty-five percent increase taking effect within the space of a month. I would like to see us look at alternative structures. Two, it doesn't provide, um, the only real increase that I see that benefits our students uh, is very, is minimal and I see seventeen percent increases in salaries for administrators. Three, I think that by doing this, we're implicitly agreeing to reducing from ten hours a day to eight hours a day. And we don't know what the parents are gonna say, the bud- because the budget assumptions are based on that eight hours. Um, I think we are implicitly agreeing to that and I am very uncomfortable with that. Again, with the fact that we could have a program running in less than a month. Um, so I, if I am allowed to propose an alternative, I would like to propose an alternative motion that goes up four dollars and fifty cents on July first and five dollars next year. So it just takes us a little bit longer. The rationale behind that is why I understand that this is supposed to be a self-sustaining program. This has not been a self-sustaining program for ten years. So to pretend that this is a budget, that, uh, it, it hasn't been because if it, if it was a self-sustaining program, it would have gone out of, if it was a real business entity, it would have gone out of business. We just identified places where we're not charging rent. We just identified other things. Okay, so fine, whatever. That, maybe that's a bad argument. But my, my argument for a four-fifty and five dollars over two years, and then I would even go for five-fifty in three years as a planned rate in- increase, uh, feels a lot more sustainable to me. And I would like to see those administrator salaries, um, that, I don't think that in this particular moment in time, increasing administrator salaries by seventeen percent is a really good move. So that's my piece.
Can I, um, can I comment on, on, on the administrative salaries piece? There are things that, uh, should be happening that by increasing, uh, the time that the person is on the ground will happen. And one of those things is evaluation of staff, uh, and that needs to happen. Um, and that's part of the reason behind that. I, with the current structure for this summer, ten hours of being in one room with the same ten, ten or twelve people is really not sustainable. And being able, and we would have to increase the cost of custodian overtime for others. And that would, that would, I don't know if that's doable.
And again, that's why I would like, I request that we separate out this summer and any associated things that may happen this summer with the general conversation about extended day. Because I agree with you. I don't think ten hours a, a, a week is, uh, acceptable for the summer because of the DSC guidelines and because of the E C guidelines that are coming out. And I do think we might have to charge a twenty-five dollar a week cleaning fee or something like that. But those things should be clearly separate and, and tied to the global pandemic that we're in instead of just being baked into the structure of the fees for the program.
Yeah, um, A- A- and I'll let you go next. I just wanna clarify two quick things. Um, one, I hear your, I hear your point, Joan, about the rent, but I think it's really important and, and Karen and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong in this. Um, this has been self-sustaining, has never been paid out of our operating budget except for since March during the pandemic. Am I correct in that?
I only know nineteen and twenty, but I, I, I mean, my belief is that even if you did not have this pandemic, this program never would have sustained itself this year.
This, this year, but previously.
Right, last year.
It was, yeah, they had.
Over the committee that the fee structure was not enough to sustain it long-term. Up until that point, it was self-sustaining and this year is, is where the rubber really hit the road. So that is because there has not been a, a rate increase, a fee increase in a very long time. This program, even at five dollars an hour, is at least two dollars an hour beyond the, beyond the average in the area. Um, if we. I- if we outsource this to a private entity, it would be much more expensive. So even at seven dollars an hour, we are still less expensive than a commercial, which is what most districts do at this point. So.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but the twenty, I, I agree we need to raise rates. I just do not think that twenty-five percent in a year is sustainable, is, is sustainable for our families in the middle of a global pandemic with twenty percent unemployment. Um, asking for a fee structure that goes up fifty cents a year for three years.
So, so I think.
If you look at the, if you look at the profit and loss for nineteen, you ended the year with a positive balance, but your loss was a hundred thousand in nineteen. I mean, you had a positive balance, but your loss was a hun- over a hundred thousand because you started with one sixty-two thou- a hundred and sixty-two thousand and then, um, your pro- your profit was a negative hundred thousand, which gave you a year in balance of sixty-one-eight. Honestly, eh, they, in order to have, to not have you bail out this program again, if you keep it at four-fifty, then there's only two things that can happen. You either have to increase it or she has to cut some of her staff, some of her expenses, because the budget that she has in place cannot be sustained on four-fifty. So that would be on Kristen to change her salaries, eh, change her expenditures, but the budget won't be able to be sustained on the four-fifty. I don't, I don't think it could.
I wanna just clarify a couple other things because I, I think this is such a complex, um, program. And I think a broader, longer, much more, uh, in-depth conversation has to be just the structure of it and, and the overall organization. Um, but as a school committee, we have authority over the fees. The hours of the program, that is the administrators. So I don't think we, as a school committee, get to determine, unfortunately or fortunately, um, an eight-hour day, ten-hour day, six-hour day, et cetera. I, I think that is, um, Dr. Thompson with Ms. Sheridan and with the, um, extended day program director to determine that aspect of it. Um, I, what I'm hearing, and what I've been hearing for a while, um, is that this program is not sustainable anymore if we do not increase fees. And, you know, unfortunately with COVID-19 and everything going on, getting cursed to our meeting in, in May, that was supposed to happen back in February and then it got up to March and then, so the timeline of this call got, or not call, meeting, um, got very compressed and, and even more complex. But what I'm hearing is that if we do not increase to five dollars an hour, there is no extended day program to offer our families. Um, but I think Anne Marie had something she wanted to ask or share and then, um, Maya.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, uh, I, I completely understand, um, the twenty-five percent increase argument. But I, I counter that with just that, most of the families that are gonna be using this, um, service are looking for childcare because they are working. So I think it's actually a luxury that mo- that these parents would have. I'm not saying that they're gonna like a twenty-five percent increase in any way, shape or form. But, and I also understand that we don't, it's not in our purview to talk about hours. But I just encourage Kristen to understand that these would be working parents that would be looking to put their kids into childcare for the summer. And eight hours is probably not sustainable when you have to work for eight hours and then you have to commute there. So if you're actually catering to the working parents that are gonna be paying an extra fee, I just really encourage you to think about that. You know, shrinking down your hours to eight because now you're putting them in a position where they have to, um, either find alternative care with a place where you can get ten hours, which is what I had, had done in the past. Cause, you know, the norm, um, system is only like a six-hour day and it just wasn't sustainable for commute and then pickup. So I just encourage you to think about that, that, uh, these are working parents who are gonna be looking for childcare.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I do wanna mention that the safety guidelines that we, uh, developed for the summer program, uh, were, was developed between, um, Sigali, Reese and I and, um, you know, and took into consideration how many hours per day, how many kids per room, um, you know, necessary safety gear, et cetera. Um, and, uh, and I understand, if, if I understand correctly, I, I believe that the rec center also had to make some adjustments for their hours for this year. So I'm very comfortable saying that let's just assess for this year in light of the COVID circumstances. Um, you know, and if it, if it means that we repel back to the ten hours per day or we make an adjustment for, um, you know, an extra late, late fee at the end of the day for parents who need that extra hour. I mean, that's, those are certainly things that we can, um, negotiate and look at in the future. Um, as it relates to the summer program right now, um, the approvals that we received from the Department of Health, uh, the budget that we created, um, everything is sort of contingent upon the, um, the number of staff per day, the eight, eight hours per day, uh, the minimum number of, um, eighty-five students per day. Um, and again, we will adjust staffing per day if we, you know, do not enroll, um, eighty students. We don't wanna eliminate the summer program because we don't have eighty-five students per day. That's not, um, an appropriate response and speaks to that need for us to offer childcare services to the families who need it. Um, so that is definitely my, my primary goal.
Uh, Maya, did you have something that you wanted to share?
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to tease apart a little bit the, what's happening with the, the regular after-school program as opposed to the summer program. And COVID aside, like let's pretend that we're not dealing with that right now. Um, it looks to me like last year, like, like for some reason, the program is struggling more financially in the summer than in the regular program. And if I'm looking at these FY twenty-one projected profit and loss for the regular extended day, it looks like you definitely need an increase over the four dollars an hour. But at four-fifty an hour, th- there would be a small profit. Um, but the problem is that the summer program would be losing money. And I'm wondering if you could explain why it's so much more expensive to run the summer program than the, than the regular, um, extended day program?
Yeah, I think it really just comes down to the number of hours per day that we are paying staff. Um, so, you know, even moving from ten hours to eight hours, that's still eight hours a day of however many staff we have working to support a ten-to-one ratio. Um, and, um, and that the rates, of course, the rates in the past, you know, haven't been enough to support a labor budget for staff who are working eight-hour days at the rates that they're earning. Um, part of the reason why we addressed the, um, the rate structure, um, in, during the executive session. So, um, there's this confluence of factors, um, that, that result in the summer program not really being profitable overall for the extended day program. And then that is compensated for over the course of the ten-month school year. Um, but again, um, in, in light of, uh, you know, my arrival to the program in August, some of the major tenants of that, that initial conversation was to improve the extended day programs offerings to families and to students and to offer enrichment and to expand the program across the dis- the district for, um, for, you know, for equitability. So for me, um, not addressing, um, the rates, uh, the rate increase necessary to do that means that, you know, in fact, I will not be enhancing the enrichment opportunities and offerings and maybe. and maybe perhaps we will not be expanding across the district, um, because it wouldn't be, um, sustainable in the current configuration.
Is it also just a, a factor of the number of students? I mean, you're talking about 85 students in the summer. How many students do you serve during the school year?
Um, during the school year, we have about 270, 280 in the after-school program and maybe about, or I'm sorry, we have about 220 or 30 in the after-school program and maybe about, um, 70 or 80 in the before-school program. I think it averages about 320, maybe 330 students overall.
So there's a lot more students to, um, spread the overhead costs over in, in the extended, the regular extended day, a school year program.
Yeah, and also, as I mentioned, um, I think in previous iterations, um, staff were simply hired for 10-hour days regardless of the number of students that were enrolled. And so if in previous iterations, there were sixty, there were only 60 or 70, um, students per day, that meant, um, much, you know, much higher ratios. That meant, that meant that we had, um, eight to one or seven to one. Um, and I also want to mention, and this is again, another challenge that I think we have to look at, is that, you know, extended day, um, is open to all students. And so we sometimes are, um, we receive students who are interested in our program for whom the program is, um, maybe not the best fit. Um, and so we are sometimes in a position where we have to assign an entire teacher's salary to that one student just to ensure that that student is safe in the program. Um, and that is not sustainable.
Yeah, I, I was also going to say that I think that their payroll in the summer has been too high, and that might be part of the pro, problem, that they've been having that trouble with being profitable at all in the summer program.
Yeah, Adam.
So, having said that, I did not see anywhere in the budget what was going to be increased in, in Richmond if we moved to $5 an hour.
I'm sorry, are you asking about specific programming?
I'm asking about where in the budget I would see the, if we move to $5 an hour, where in the budget do I see the resulting increase for enrichment activities like you were just talking about?
Um, I think it would likely fall under supplies and materials or supplies and resources. And then there's another line for, um, again, I, I'd have to look, you know, at the same time that you're looking guest, guests and entertainment. So, um, supplies and resources have to do with offering, um, STEM, green chemistry, um, uh, you know, a, a lot more hands-on experiential learning within the actual classroom setting, um, which is facilitated by our teachers, um, and which has, eh, um, increased, uh, exorbitantly this year. I mean, th- this year's enrichment comparable to years past, I would say, um, is, uh, is quite high. Um, and, um, and, and, and only looking to increase, you know, certainly as we, um, as we expand to other sites. And then, of course, the enrichment opportunities that we offered this year, we'd like to offer in the, uh, subsequent year and also increase on those opportunities. So, um, we brought in someone who, um, did a live demonstration for Raptor Lifecycle, and, um, we brought in Chess Club. Um, you know, these are things that we'd like to continue to offer to parents and to our students and, um, and also expand on those offerings.
Karen, can you help with this? Because it actually looks like the amount of money in supplies and activity go, activities goes down.
Yeah, I was just going to tell you that. If you look at the, um, the budget, if you look at the one that says FY21 Extended Day Program Projected Profit and Loss, eh, and to the, on, um, F, it's FY20 School Year with a new salary structure and a 25% increase for the program at $5 an hour. You'll see that she's got, in her equipment, she's got technology, um, of 7,700, which I believe she wants to buy some Chromebooks. Um, she's also got PD training for her staff, um, of 2,000. And she's also got some extended day miscellaneous where she'd like to do some special events and programming of 1,200.
So.
And I, I haven't seen those things in the past budget.
So Chromebooks, our students take home with them, right? We have a, we have a one-to-one initiative happening next year? If, because of the remote learning?
We will have, if kids are heading home, should we go fully remote.
Right.
But we're not, we're not saying we're one-to-one. We will have them in the, the plan is to have them in the classroom, K through five. But that depends on where we end up with the state.
But in our, in our capital, in our capital discussions, we were assured that students could each have their own Chromebook.
Yes. Yes, but, but we're not, but should we, should we go back to normal someday? Those Chromebooks will be in classrooms.
You're going to keep them in the classroom. Students can't take them home with them.
Right, right. The, the, the original intent was never to have a third grader walking back and forth for the Chromebook.
I mean, we, we were telling, at one point, we talked about giving iPads to kindergartners, so we were going ag- wild crazy.
There's a difference between having them and we're going to increase the number of iPads at the kindergarten level too. But there's a difference between having them at home and carrying them back and forth.
Yep, yep, but my, my impression was that we were going one-to-one as a result of remote learning. My other question is, um, about staffing. If you're hiring staff for 10-hour days, there's, you know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm accustomed to the daycare model where, um, staff, there's very few staff in the morning and the evening when you have the fewest number of kids for ratios, and the staff expands in the middle of the day. And if you're telling me that that wasn't being followed, um, I just, I guess I just, I still see more movement in, in managerial salary and managerial stuff to manage salaries. Um, that just doesn't, again, I can't get to the 25% because I just think that there's more work that could be done.
I, I don't know, we can compare this to childcare. Um, I, I think it's really important to, to understand what we're talking about, because childcare ratios and pay is also centered around nap time. And nap time is when you can have less teachers in the room. That's not happening here with these kids. I'm pretty sure they're not napping, even.
No, I'm talking about beginning and end of day. I'm talking about beginning and end of day.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's a totally different structure. Um, so, so this isn't, this isn't public education, and this isn't childcare. I think what we're talking about, most of the concerns with the summer is that this is summer camp. But it's never really been structured as summer camp, and it's gotten us in a lot of trouble. But I also think this conversation of hours and structure really isn't something that we should be discussing tonight. Um.
Except it impacts the budget and the fee that we charge and whether or not the pro, the, the program is profitable or not. That's the only reason why it keeps coming up.
If she went, if you went with the increase, um, to the 450 rather than the $5 an hour, I mean, eh, she would just have to make sure that she, you know, has her budget and knows that this is how much money she has for her budget and stay with that budget. And I think what they're saying is that may impact on how much you can improve her program. But can she live within it? She's going to have to, because she has no other means. What, we, we are, I don't think the school is going to be able to bail her out again, so that would be what she has to do.
We're not going to be in a position where, next year, based on the cost that we are looking at, where we can be harboring any sort of bailout, reduce.
I'm aware.
You know, reducing costs, et cetera, et cetera. At $4 an hour, it is losing money. At 450 an hour, maybe it'll break even dur, during the regular day, but we cannot offer a summer school for, for, for 450 an hour. It is, it, it would have to come off of the table. We, we are not building, you know, when I came on, I, I was tasked with two things. One was to expand the program because we were turning people away, and the other was to improve the programs we were offering more than just a sit around and do your homework. So worked hard on that for the last three years. We are now at a point where we cannot afford to take the next steps. So if the committee doesn't, wants us to abandon expanding the program, wants us to go backwards with what we were offering beforehand, then we can look at that. But if, i- if we're changing directions, you know, that's fine. I, you know, and.
Dude, that's a little, I'm not recommending that we go backward and we abandon everything. I'm recommending that it takes us an extra year to get there.
But I think, so, so we haven't officially surveyed parents in some of the things that you're asking for, Joan, but I know that Chris did do some surveys. And I know that for the start schools, uh, school start time task force, that has completely been put on pause as well because of COVID-19. Um, part of those surveys and that data that is living on my computer and pivot tables to share with you eventually. Um, we, we did ask some childcare questions in there, and it was crystal clear to that task force, which is representative of two of our elementary principals and, and many other people and Chris, that we need to grow this program. Um, whether or not school start times change, like, it was so clear in that data that this, this has to grow. And I, I think if we don't increase, what I just keep hearing is that if we don't increase the fee to $5, the growth of this program slows down, which means not serving families.
So we're not a consensus body, we're a voting body? And I'm, eh, and, and, and then that's okay. I know we all like each other, but like, and that's okay. So, eh, eh, you know, we don't need to come to consensus on this. Um, I, you know, I just want to put it out there that I, we're, I feel like we're starting to repeat the same points.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me go to Anne Marie, and then there's a motion on the table, but Anne Marie.
Just a quick question. Um, do the, uh, summer rates and the after-school extended rates have to be the same?
No.
No.
No, they don't, they don't. I mean, it makes for continuity, um, and it, and it certainly helps with budget, because the reality is, um, then we would need to look at adjusting our staff rates. Um, so, and the staff would have a, a school year rate, and then their rate during the summer would be different. And then would they stay for the summer? Would be, would we be a marketable enough program to retain talent, which certainly in light of COVID is useful to have teachers who work during the school year also work in the same classrooms in the summer since they know where everything is. Um, so it's, it's something to examine, certainly, but, um.
Well, let, let me say why I asked that, just so it's, um, because to Joan's point, um, you're going to be asking people to increase that, you know, take a 25% increase in the next, like, two weeks. You know, they're going to be asked to sign up at the, eh, at the rate and giving them very little notice. So is it something that we could look at to, you know, do that step increase at 450 and then say, okay, but for the school year, it's going to be five for the after-school program?
Uh, yeah, I do, I don't know that the summer program would run. I know the current budget, um, wouldn't support it. We'd have to significantly revise, and again, that might mean a dip in, um, staffing. I think, um, it, it, just, just to clarify, I, I know that we, we have included the prospect of a rate increase on all of our paperwork beginning back in March. So, um, parents are, uh, very much aware that this is, um, being, um, discussed this evening and that, um, that a rate increase was, was on the trajectory for the program, um, you know, really beginning as early as, um, January, when these conversations started, uh, between, um, Teresa, Dave and I, and Karen. So, um, so I, eh, I, I'm not going to, I don't want to suggest in any way that this would be a, a shock. Um, I, I understand, you know, originally when I proposed, it was $6, and then I took the committee's, um, advice and suggestions into consideration and revised, and then tempered, um, not only the initial increase, but then the rollout thereafter. Um, so I hope, uh, you know, that is being recognized as well, that, you know, this is intended to be more palatable um, for our, uh, families as they are impacted. And to your point, um, because this is impacting primarily our families who are working and who need this care during time that they are, um, at work or traveling from work.
Right. You know, I don't hear that we're holding anybody hostage. But, you know, the, the budget based on $5 is, is all, you know, if you get less kids, the overhead cost is not spread out. So less than 85 children signing up for this camp, it's still going to be difficult to run. So, you know, I, I want to be totally transparent on that. Normally, we have around 120 kids, so I think 85 is, is a pretty safe, um, estimate on that. But if we get below that number, and I know Chris is talking about, well, we'd have to redo staff, but, but your overhead is still your overhead. You're still going to need to have custodian, whether you have 65 kids there or 80.
Right.
And we don't even know if one custodian is actually going to be enough. So that's a whole nother thing.
I know, but I, I think it's okay to also talk about adding a COVID fee, like, on a monthly basis for extra cleaning.
Yeah.
With her, with her summer budget, because I just plugged it in, um, if we did the 450 with the budget that she has set for the summer, which also includes adding $5 a day for her summer PPE, um, and her, if you put it to 450, then you have a loss of $14,406. So she definitely has to redo her budget.
Well, there's also, and this is why it gets into the salaries, because there's also a, a salary increase that's almost that. Like, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm, that's why this keeps coming up, because I, I think you could offset that with creative staffing, with deferring admin salary increases for a year and some of, and some other things. I just, yeah.
At, at the current, um, eh, you know, based on my current contract, um, I would only be able to be at the site for, um, 30 hours. And so if we open for 40 hours, and in light of COVID and the new, um, safety precautions, um, I, I mean, I guess in, in terms of accountability, I think it's kind of important that I'm there. So, um, you know, I think the, the, there is no rate increase, there is absolutely no rate increase for either, um, of the administrators. Um, there is a request to increase the number of hours from 30 to, you know, and, and if 35 is too high, um, we could look at 34. But again, um, we're talking about a reconfiguration entirely of the summer camp with a lot of expectations for accountability, and, um, it seems necessary that, uh, the program's director is there to oversee that that takes place.
But if it's a 40-hour-a-week program, I mean, th- we can go back and forth. We're not a consensus body. Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. It's, it's, it's an important conversation. It's a great conversation, but there's so much on our agenda and, um, there's no way we're not seeing each other again until July 22nd. I'll, I'll tell you that much right now. But I, I think that there was a motion on the table, um, and Maya, I'm going to recap your motion, but tell me if I'm wrong. The motion was to increase to $5 an hour, starting 7/1, um, and also approve the salary proposal that we saw in executive session. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Dave Catania, did you second that motion?
I did.
You did. Okay. So on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed?
Uh, nay.
Okay, so it passes four to one, but I think it's very clear, there's still a lot of analysis and work and continued conversations, some of which is very much with Dr. Thompson and Chris Kapizlo first. I will continue to be engaged, and we will bring it back to the committee as appropriate.
Great.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Kapizlo, for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Yes, thank you guys so much. I know it was a lot of your time, uh, a lot of rigorous work there, and, um, good luck with the rest of your items.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, so going back to our agenda, uh, Dr. Thompson's report, um, and you have a strategic plan update for us this evening?
Yes, I have, uh, I have lots, uh, to do. Let me quickly get over and, uh, bring up, okay, I'm actually going to start with some other items first and then, uh, then go to the strategic plan. Um, so today is, uh, the 17th. Uh, we were told that we were going to get, um, guidance from the Department of Education on, uh, what next school year was going to look like. Uh, we still do not have that. Um, I did receive, um, a text earlier from someone who I think is sitting on or would know someone who's sitting on the, uh, task force, saying that it might be later than this week. So we are all very happy, uh, about that. I, I'm being sarcastic when I say that. Um, so I, I'm going to ask families to, to consider some things, because the conversation has been around a continuum of what school would look like. And again, you know, the full remote like we're in now and various versions of a hybrid, a blend, where kids are coming to school part-time. Um, one thing that I have seen suggested in other states is that, uh, start talking with family friends that are in the same schools and talk about pods, so that we can work, uh, you can maybe, you know, some are on, some are off, uh, with, with different hours and what have you, so the kids have, uh, someplace to go. We don't know exactly what the, what the distance requirements are going to be at this point. Uh, that affects everything from busing to how many students we can have in a classroom, to how much extended day we can, uh, we can run on a given day. All of those things are very much up in the air. But we are going to need to know several things, and I was hoping to have, uh, wink, to have some sort of ideas to what it was going to look like before I ask parents, what are you going to do? Because it's hard to a- ask and answer those questions until parents are able to look at what those options are and what it will mean for them. I fully understand the stress that you are going through. All of us on this side are going through it as well. I, I think my, if, if you look quickly at, uh, Dr. Wyatt, you can see how stressed he's looking right now. But, um, yeah, you know, and I'm joking, but honest, honestly, you know, it takes, it takes a long time to figure out how you're going to arrange care for your children around a work schedule. And I, I am fully cognizant of that. I am not trying to delay anything. I'm trying to be efficient in doing it. Um, but we, we will probably need to send out, um, some sort of survey to get some sort of answer from parents. Probably it's looking like before the guidance actually comes in. I hope that I am wrong. But, you know, if, if students are in every other week, can you pair up with a family or a group of? But, you know, if if students are in every other week, can you pair up with a family or a group of families? They call it podding. Uh, and again, the idea is to keep the contagion, you know, groups from mixing. Uh, but if you have, much like you, once upon a time, we had large family groups. That isn't really our society anymore. Um, but how how that would work, how could that work? Start having those conversations. Uh, we will, in theory, try to put siblings together. But if you have a pod, we might need to try to put pods together. I I I don't know exactly uh what that answer is going to be right now, but um I I would ask families to please, please, please pay attention to connect ads, pay attention to uh email blasts. Please, please, please respond to surveys. Um, normally, schools try to get all this sort of information prior to the end of the school year. Um, unfortunately, the the state in trying to figure this out uh has put us behind the eight ball. Um, you know, and all I can do is, I mean, I I can say I'm sorry. Uh, I think that uh at some level, um, this is kind of a good thing, and I'm saying it tongue in tongue in cheek, but I think at some level, um, you know, the state, uh, the people who run the state, the people who work, who who went to school 20 somewhat years ago are kind of finally realizing how complex schools are, uh, how much servicing schools provide and how integral they are to our society. Um, so hopefully, uh, the federal government will realize that as well with the HEROES Act. So I'll get off of that. Um, we are currently, you know, planning this. We we've talked about the task force. Uh, we are continuing to do that work over this week, over um the summer. One of the key goals is to work on the curriculum so that it is integrated, it is more engaging. Obviously, being in a blended situation will be more engaging just by definition, because kids will be able to come in and see teachers and check in with them. Um, but we need, we're going to be working to develop a curriculum that will work in the different hybrids, as well as full remote, where you have targeted instruction, you have kids working on in an integrated approach uh to the things that they have learned. Um, poor, poor Dr. Wyatt, that's why he's looking so stressed up there, uh, is tasked with leading that. Uh, I'll apologize to you now publicly, Alec. Um, so we will, we will go from there. Middle school building project, I have an update. Uh, the building committee has uh chosen an owner's project manager. The owner owner's project manager is the is the firm, the person, the people that are hired to run the feasibility study. Um, that is uh being presented to or given to the MSBA for approval at their July 13th meeting. Uh, we're hoping that they will approve compass management, which is uh the OPM that uh the committee chose chose. Uh, I'd like to thank Alan Slater for his leadership and getting that done, and also specifically Kathy Carney uh for her work in actually putting all the bid. I I sat in that meeting and my mouth was was down probably around my knees, and I was thankful every minute that Alan and Kathy were there with me because they understood the Greek that was being spoken. So I am indebted to them and appreciate their efforts. Um, the CARES Act, uh, tomorrow, we are looking to finalize that proposal. Um, as I mentioned before, it's 345,000 to Norwood. Uh, part of that does go to St. Catherine along the same line as our Title I appropriation. We basically have uh four priorities that we are looking at. Um, first is the curriculum work that I mentioned earlier. Technology and increasing their technology ability, including hotspots and and devices and upgrading uh computers for some of our teaching staff as well. Mental health is in there, and of course, uh, buying equipment and PPE and sanitizing so that we're ready to make sure our students are safe. So when people ask, what are we doing? We are in the process of planning around curriculum. We are in the process of buying the materials that we need. Computers, technology, PPE to be ready to open while we are waiting to find out what open looks like. Um, there's going to have to be, there's another task group on uh rescheduling. There's a task group on safety procedures. There's a task group on all these uh things going in that will go in, and those are being formed and being studied right now. So when we do have that guideline, those guidelines, we will be able to hit the ground um running. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to kind of try to switch over to uh the strategic plan. But before I start, I I want to remind uh both the committee and um and the folks out there in the in the audience that uh this was a very ambitious um strategic plan in year one. We wrote it, the the plan for this year prior to knowing whether the override was going to pass. Uh, we are thankful the override passed, but there was a whole bunch of stuff that came into our work this year that was on top of the plan that we that we put together. So, um, you know, and those that do strategic plans will tell you that if you see green throughout the entire thing, then it wasn't ambitious ambitious enough. And if it's red all through the through it, then you're you're a fool. Um, we have mostly green, a little bit of yellow, and a good amount of red. The other piece that has derailed some of these um is our obvious COVID-19 pandemic piece. Uh, there are several things you'll see that are 80% done, 75% done. That last 25% because of being, you know, shut down and in full closure, uh, having to shift resources to reinventing education in Norwood to being remote. Uh, and then we say before, that is not how anyone imagined K to uh K-12 education to be done. Uh, we had to do it on the fly. We were building the plane and flying it at the same time. And I will uh also comment that it was turbulent air air as well. So there's a lot of bumps along the way. Um, the staff made um a a lot of uh good progress with that though. All right, so I'm going to try to uh present, I have actually two screens going because I'm tired of trying to go um blind. So my question to you is, can you now see, whoops, we're streaming. I want to make sure you can see uh the second screen. Is it coming through?
It is.
All right. So this is the actual document that was sent to you. Uh, once I present it to uh to the committee, we will also post it tomorrow on our school website. I will remind the people out there that the dashboard is also on the school website, and you can see uh the progress in that format as well. This is the written report, so I will kind of scroll through it. I'm not going to go through the values and vision statements. We've gone through those before. Uh, the first few pages are just synopsis of uh the plan, but I'm going to kind of go scroll through to the detail. Um, so the first one is a resource, investment and resource allocation. Uh, and the first one comes up, you know, under the transparent budget process that includes all stakeholders. Um, so you can see through here that we uh identified uh three to five other districts and looked at their best practices. Um, we also uh attended uh Masbo and MASC workshops on budget presentations. Um, the other piece uh in here was interviews with three to five districts. So although we identified those districts and looked at the materials, we didn't quite get down to sitting down to scheduling um time to sit down and talk to them. So that's kind of why that is leveled uh yellow. It might be something that uh we should look at as we go forward about putting into uh next year's plan. Um, we did the Survey Monkey and uh and that came out uh and benefited us in providing us information with with how um people got and looked at budget data from from us. Um, use that to assess our current practices. Uh, the next area, uh, improve transparency. Um, and and this is one that, you know, we started and then the budget, the budget process, I think, kind of uh scooped us up. I don't know if I don't know if any of the budget subcommittee want to comment um on that, but we did develop action areas. I think we did uh improve greatly our transparency uh in what we've done. Um, I I don't think we're totally invisible yet, but I I think we've made excellent uh progress with that. And it says it's critical here, and part of that is, you know, is is the is the timeline that, because we wanted to have that done before the real budget worked. We continued with that, and I don't think 60% in total would really be a red. It probably would be a yellow if if the timeline wasn't off. Um, so then moving down to 1.2, uh, community outreach. Um, you know, and one of the key things we wanted to do is we wanted to um we wanted to keep engaging with uh with the community. So we um, you know, identified stakeholder groups to present the strategic plan. Strategic plan two, and um, you know, I did a presentation. It was it was um played on NCM. Uh, I had an audience of about 25 people or so in the uh in 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 the um small theater at the high school. Um, so that was developed, that was uh produced. Um, and we also uh used that same presentation, uh, trained the principals, and they gave it to each and every PTO so that each and every PTO that was uh given to them as well. Uh, the one piece that we did not get a lot of feedback on, I got feedback from the first time that I had done it. Um, we struggled a little bit with the with the televised piece, and then the plan was to uh at our third PTO meeting, um, discuss that with the PTO leaders, and and that was kind of inhabit, but it was very small, uh, because it was early on. That was a early March uh things. We did not, that was a little bit of a of a crisis pandemic um piece right there. Okay, align school and town resources. Um, and, you know, going back to the munis, we have made that transition to munis. But the other piece to it was moving to the HR and payroll piece. Um, and tried to do that pretty quickly because we wanted to get all of our systems talking together. Um, that combined with um a wonderful, uh, but brand new to to us, uh, financial operations manager, uh, Mrs. Sheridan. Um, you know, there was a lot of work to occur to do around munis and getting things working. So some of the red um in here. So for instance, if you look at the implementation, budget tracking and accounts payable, um, Karen didn't join us until August. Um, and she spent most of the fall doing that. And if you look at that uh timeframe, it was supposed to be done by um by August. So that that is, we now have all the accounts uh aligned and and aligned, you know, to the to the DESE um budget numbers and what have you. Um, the timing of that was problematic. Um, and in the system, we really can't go back and and change that. That is um 100% at this point. But that was, took a little longer than we had anticipated. Um, so we planned and set up for the payroll and human uh resource piece. That is done. Uh, that I think was even a bigger task than trying to get the accounts payable section uh set up. Um, monitor report, uh, improve financial systems and outcomes. Um, that has been done, but I don't think we did a particularly good job of tracking, because most of it happened uh after the end of uh of January. Um, Tyler Munis training, so that has been ongoing. Uh, the good news, that's critical, we're about halfway where we would like to be. But um, we do have a commitment from the town to uh complete that, and we are hoping to have that done by uh the fall. And I think it's one of those things where when you use and learn something new, you uh you tend to learn what more it can do and what more training you could use with it. So we definitely have um a a focus on that, on on things that we want to do around projections, around encumbering monies ahead of time so that there's less work and and more going forward. Um, the 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 survey with the administrative group on munis, uh, we did ask that question. Uh, it was not a positive outlook at this point in time. There are some things that we need to um straighten out, some process things that still are kind of clunky in the system. Um, we we do have a commitment from the town manager to to sit down and talk about that, hopefully at some point, uh, either over the over the summer or early next year. Review and evaluate uh Norwood contracts, and that's at 96%. Uh, we did do a a survey of comparable towns. Uh, we did develop a timeline and schedule for contract reviews, and all the contracts have been reviewed at this point in time. Um, there might be uh one that we should come back and and revisit, but that is a group we have not actually started negotiating with yet. Um, engage in training on contact uh contract negotiations. We did do that at the MASC uh conference this past fall. That was completed. Um, we did develop a comparison list and a pros and cons and things that we wanted to try to uh address in our contracts, and we have all of that. Um, the one piece that we started, but I don't think that we quite completely got finished, is a is a comparison of salaries and benefits. Um, and again, that's that that is, I think it was a little bit more difficult to to get to that because the, you know, depending on how people report that information to the state, depends on how it looks. So it isn't always a complete um total picture. I don't know if anyone wants to comment on on that one. Okay. All right. Uh, moving on, facilities and operations. Um, this is one. And and again, we have a very good leadership uh with with Paul Ricardi. We have a great building committee put together. So, um, we have, you know, completed, um, you know, our committee appointments, our educational profile, and these are all things we had to do um in our interest part of of the process. Enrollment verifications, uh, facilities planning committee, we've done that. Enrollments are uh maintenance and capital information was all put put in on time. Feasibility, uh, study agreement that was signed a little later than we wanted to. We had to keep going back around enrollments and whether this middle school uh will be a six to eight or a five to eight. Um, and but all of those uh pieces with the MSBA have been uh met, and we are now able to move on. Uh, hopefully, after July 13th, uh, we will uh be able to move on and create uh bench parts uh and objectives around uh the next phase of the study. Uh, looking at the infrastructure for all schools. Um, so this is the technology plan, and this is one of the things that got um sidetracked with uh our shutdown due to COVID-19. Uh, you can see that we have an outline of updated technology plan. Uh, we have a current technology is done, but when it comes to the committee, that was going to be formed um and starting to operate and look at those plans early on. Uh, and you can see that was 80% done, but the the actual meetings and things did not get to happen because we were fully remote. And I'll be quite honest, the um, the technology department was fully focused on training teachers in technology, getting technology of them running, getting uh Chromebooks and materials out to both staff and students, uh, so that remote learning could happen. So that uh definitely come under the victim of the shutdown. Um, safety measures, uh, and I did share the um, the the safety operations plan uh with the committee in a confidential folder uh with you, but that, um, so we've gone through all of the safety procedures. Uh, we've looked at the infrastructure. Um, we've assessed communications and ways to improve that, and that is actually part of our capital campaign going forward. Um, and you can see that all of that um was done. Uh, the one piece that um, you know, we got, again, delayed on because of having to focus on on remote learning, was actually getting the plan all completely finalized. It it's in draft form. Uh, and the other piece um is is we have that assessment done, but the assessment teams had uh some of the walkthroughs were not completed this spring. We'll have to delay them to the fall. Um, so innovative instruction and personalized learning. Now, this is in red, not because it's bad or someone took a red pen to it. It's 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 uh in red because it is a priorities, it is a priority objective. Um, so you can see that um establish standards and instructional practices for the district uh based on best practice, build understanding amongst the teachers. Um, so this was a major focus this year through uh both PD and building led um PD by by principals. Um, and you can see that those key elements were identified. Uh, we used the Rebus um book on maximizing uh instruction and student outcomes. Um, it's a very easy to follow book. Um, so then, you know, we identified those uh pieces. We produced professional development. The principals reviewed all of these practices and and helped teachers put them into place. So we are now working with um kind of one set of of terms. Um, next year, we're hoping that people are going to get more council. We're going to see more and more of those, but that was an initial um big step for us. And that that, and again, you know, back to my point of aligning school goals, you know, your your leadership principal goals and your strategic plan all up. So every single principal had uh this one as one of their professional practice goals. Looking at uh professional uh common planning time, and this is one that we kind of jumped into uh late after the override because we saw an opportunity to work on this earlier than we had originally planned. Um, but we uh exceeded, we had um, you know, staff and department meetings for for common planning. We actually ended up having uh common planning during the day because of being able to rearrange some of our special of being able to rearrange some of our specials with that and all of that was achieved and actually pretty early on. So the next one was implementing a professional learning system, using learning time for instructional improvement, who's high quality professional development, PLCs, tiered supports, PLCs, Alec, I'm drawing a blank because I'm...
Professional learning communities.
Thank you. Data teams and project-based learning, you can see that we did, one of the key pieces of that was instructional rounds, so we did talk about that, that was planned in two of our schools. It did happen at the high school, very well done, it was scheduled for the Prescott in March, so that is why that is not agreeing, we got 80% of it done, all the pre-work was done for it, it was the actual walking and instructional rounds that was not done, so that was a little disappointing, but they should be ready to pick that up next year. So again, develop a professional learning plan for the district that supports a strategic plan, that was done and we have next year's ready to go based on a calendar change, which I will come back to later on, but some of these things and especially in this area where the data teams finishing up and looking at final data from our assessment system, again, was hijacked because we were not, we were not in session to collect that data, have those teams come together, but the pre-work was done for that. The next important process benchmark, tiered supports and you can see that that is 100% done, we have done the PD for it, we had instructional rounds and notes based on doing that, but again, you know, the data team, meeting agendas and that sort of piece, you know, we got about three quarters of the way through on that one. And then we get into core instructional programming for each level and obviously this year was about ELA, so we did have, the committee was established, we implemented, we looked to implement foundations in year two and expanded and that was completed. We did our pilot of our ELA program and we did purchase an elementary language arts curriculum for K through five and that is the first one in revision and purchase in at least 10 years, so we're pretty happy with that and looking forward to putting that into place next year. Social studies and I think we, Alec discussed this piece a little earlier where we were starting to look at social studies and the issue with that is that we're ahead of where the program developments are. So we've done the work, we've done the review of what we need to get right now, the problem is it's not quite out there and Alec can help me, but I believe we are looking at purchasing materials for grade five and the high school for civics, am I right?
Right, for AP, AP history and yeah, elementary grade five, we, the people civics materials.
Right, and those are fairly new state requirements, we can find materials for that, but the rest of the standard revisions, there just isn't a program yet and it doesn't make sense to spend money on something that's not necessarily to our standards yet, so we're going to slow down a little bit on that. Elementary math, we need to evaluate that next year and if you look on that, it says not started, I'm not quite sure why it's even appearing on this report, but that's one of the things that we'll be looking at next year, our contract with Envisions expires and we're going to do a look and review of our math curriculum. So these are all, I think we've covered all of these, so the elementary ELA program implemented with professional development, there was professional development scheduled for this spring, I think Stephanie West did an overview of it with the staff, but it was not what we intended to do because of the shutdown and not being able to bring somebody in, so we are planning to readdress that at the beginning of the school year and looking at if we have to do it in a remote fashion, how we would do that. At that point in time, early on, it was not something people had thought about doing in that venue, so we had to parlay that until early and that, I believe Alec, is the day after convocation we're planning.
Right.
All right, so 3.5 leveraging technology to optimize teacher and personal learning, so this is, you know, expanding the Chromebooks access to three to five, we did that and if you remember, the Chromebooks that were replaced have rolled down to that, the Fuse Fellows, we did have Cohort Two start this past year and we have two new members of our Fuse Fellows, they, I have to say, that, so glad that we jumped on that early on because those folks with integrating and personalized learning were huge, huge, huge help at the multiple levels when we had to rethink how we were doing this, I don't know where we would be without Jill Milton and some of our other Fuse Fellows. So, you know, we did develop a definition for personalized learning over the summer and provided technology infused PD around that as well as, so this one, identify high quality online paper and digital instruction, critical research, be used systematically for personalized learning, so this, a lot of this comes back to the Renaissance piece and the freckle pieces that go along with that and being able to be personalized, I don't know why that says 50% because, do you Alec?
Believe, I can't see the language there, but I believe we wanted to do, you know, an end of year assessment and we didn't get that done.
Right.
Because of the COVID.
Right, okay. So you can see the Chromebooks, Chromebooks. Analyze and simplify data to inform instruction for all students, so we wanted to use data to create a baseline measurement for student performance, so we identified our assessment system, we started using it for benchmarks, we use that to influence our, you know, targeted instruction for our students, but then, you know, we kind of ran into some pieces around having those final benchmarks and being able to use those and measure improved performance in our students, so not having, you know, that third and fourth assessment because of the shutdown really, really put these couple things off. But, you know, the system is there, the work is there, we just need to have the kids with us. Development, implement inclusive practices that continually meet diverse needs, PK to 12. So this is, you know, example of having a new director and sometimes when new directors come in, some of the things that other people had planned for them when they weren't here are not necessarily what could realistically be done, so there was some work done around inclusive practices. So we have identified what we want to do towards inclusive practices next year, it will be a nice piece beyond what we have done with regular instructional practices this year and a lot of it is going to revolve around universal design for learning and we'll come back to that when we talk a little bit about the PD plan. Programs and pathways and Dr. Gallagher spoke a lot to this early on, but our career pathways has had a great first year, we've seen an increase in students applying to that program in year two. So, I mean, the one piece in here that was that we had hoped to have a second pathway accepted, we're probably a year away from that at this point, that's not necessarily bad, sometimes rushing is not good, but that's why you can see some of those numbers are a little bit down, we're actually, we're very pleasantly pleased with the amount of support we're getting from several, several companies in the area with that medical, you know, medical pathway. Review and align existing programs to fit a K to 12 career pathway model and you can see, I think this one is where we get into, so we've done an interest survey for both students and staff for the careers that are interested in investigating, so we have some survey data for where to go. The other piece is that, you know, we did start Project Lead the Way to explore the computer path, computer innovation pathway, we are looking to add two more in our budget next year, we were able to buy the equipment for that and we do have in our budget the training for medical detectives and learning by design, so the idea is, is that each, each year, students would do one of these project-based engineering and innovation pathway classes as part of their, part of their STEM piece and again, to expose them to different types of careers and really future-type careers that could go in many different directions. Okay, identify community partnerships for various pathways, you can see that we did hold our career first, first career week in November, I don't, they used, they wanted to do one in the spring as well and again, that got delayed because of the COVID piece. Participating, so presented to students participating in programs with community partners, we wanted to see that increase, we have about 10% of our students right now, we'd like to see that increase over time and we're only about 50% on that. And also identify more businesses that can help with our current healthcare pathways and hopefully the innovations information pathway is the second one that we're looking at, working on. So safe and supportive schools, number five, so this is systematic approach to building student and teacher capacity for social emotional learning, so we did establish an SEL task force, we did identify a program and we did implement, oh my God, Alec, you're going to have to help me again, second step at the middle school, elementary level?
No, they looked at it, but they were, Character Strong is the one that they're piloting at the middle school.
Right, Character Strong, Choose to be Nice is the other one, second step at the middle school, we did put in place Open Circle at the elementary level and again, that's a base program, I think we still probably need to develop that a little bit, so piloting that, to put that in, part of, part of the difficulty with Choose to be Nice, they really liked that program, but they hadn't really developed a middle school program yet, it's kind of one of those things where there's a lot of elementary programming, but not as much middle and high school programming, so it's finding what it is and having the, you know, finding ones that'll work and being able to bring them in. So pilot and select SEL programs, so we're kind of in a holding pattern because it's hard to pilot something if you can't actually bring it in and this is one of the things that we're working on. We still need to do more work in development of building-based SEL initiatives and strategies, but we've made some good tasks there, one that the middle school has done this year is that they have a group that is planning SEL activities, they're rolling them out through Mustang Block and then following them up in academic subjects, we need to expand that a little bit. Training with the district administration, SEL competencies, that is something that we have looked at and finding someone to come in has been difficult and then, again, the closure. 5.2 is culturally responsive practices and obviously this is something, this is an area right here that we need to focus on going forward and especially into next year, it really is kind of, especially at the elementary level, it became just one of those things that were overwhelming, I use the terminology of too many trains and not enough engines to pull them all, we did make some inroads with these, but there definitely is more work to do and we were kind of running out of, with all the pilots and stuff, running out of PD time to look at some of these as well, but this is something that we need to pump up in the next, in year two. Culturally competent communication and outreach, so we did identify the major cultures in Norwood, we did develop a community survey, develop programming for parents, we had some of that in spots, but it was not necessarily universal, it's one of those things, you know, we had talked about in our budget about having an EL sort of, you know, department chair type person overseeing, this is something that having that kind of person would be helpful in planning and perspective to do all of this. We need to look back at policies, creating consistency among information, one thing that we did add this year is a translation service, you want to talk a little bit about that, Alec, to make sure we're getting out to information out to parents?
Yeah, we took on a new vendor tele-language, it's called, and principals have used it have really found it to be really efficient and effective, so basically you call a number, you say what your language is and what the event is, you know, whether it's a one-to-one kind of translation or just straight interpreter services and they set you up with somebody and you're off and running, so I think that'll be a keeper going forward and they also do paper translations, so they'll translate any documents that you have that need to be translated and their rates are pretty reasonable, it's called tele-language.
Right, so definitely upping the communication and being able to reach out to families and have conversations with them, so that's 5.36, that contact translation service and that has increased our communication with families. We still need to develop a correction, collection of resources and honestly, in a district our size with the number of second, you know, non-English speakers, we really should have someone manning a welcome, a welcome center doing this, we do not have that, we have made some progress with that, 80%, we're a little off target, but again, some of that can be, you know, it got pushed off to the side with all of the other work that we were doing and, you know, same with the, with the survey, you know, the survey been created from staff, I think the, it was coming back around to that. So 5.4 was our crisis and safety assessment and again, I shared with you the SEO P, but we did have a task force for looking at our, at our safety processes and procedures, we reviewed, reviewed the operation plan, we shared it with the police and fire and got their impact, this was scheduled to be shared with the administrative team, but our focus shifted in March back to, you know, back to trying to do remote learning, so the first feedback from, you know, is there at this point, you have it, we have not made final edits yet, so we're a little behind on that, but I think once you take a look at it, you realize that it's a pretty comprehensive document and represents a tremendous amount of work and I'm pretty happy with where we are with that, we didn't quite finish it by June, I think we can probably have it done by September or so. So with that, I don't know if the committee has any questions on the strategic plan?
No, go ahead, mine. I just wanted to ask, what are the plans for revisiting the topics that haven't, for the plans for year two?
Right, so we need to, we need to come back together and do it with our strategic, yes, strategic planning team to come up with year two, the plan is to actually do that in September, normally you would do it the end of June, unfortunately, we are not anywhere near normal. And part of that is the amount, you know, the work that we need to do to be ready for September around curriculum, around, you know, restructuring schedules, all of that. I don't think it's the time to do that. And we'll have a better picture of what is doable and what we should be looking at first in year two of that plan. But obviously, cultural proficiency is going to be a big piece. SEL needs to be a big piece. Some of those things are, you know, I mean, the, the school building project moves into the feasibility markers on that. The SOP is, is finalizing and educating. So there's not, but there's, there's definitely, when we, well, I mean, when we did this plan, we didn't know if the override was gonna pass. Well, the override did pass, and thank goodness it did. But that added a whole layer on top of, you know, what already was kind of a full boat. And, you know, as we were all kind of doing this for, for the first time, I think we took a big chunk of that cookie. So I, I, I think second time around, we'll be a little more strategic about what exactly is in that plan. But the plan is theoretically middle, middle of September. I do want to set that up in July. And I would very much like a lot of the same players in the room as they helped develop the original plan. But we, you know, if every single member of the committee can be there, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Adam Thompson. Any other questions at this time on the strategic plan? Okay. So next on the agenda is a school committee anti-racism resolution that the MASC put out. So I'm gonna read it. And then I would like to know if the committee would like us to officially sign this. So this is drafted by the MASC that I'm about to read. Whereas, as schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas, it is the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity and inclusion. And whereas, every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas, every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change for sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas, every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by Black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas, we as school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions. Resolved, that North Public Schools and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our students, families, faculty and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district and the Commonwealth is anti-racist that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. Is there a motion for us as the North Public, North School Committee to sign this resolution that the MASC drafted?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, Dave?
I was, I wasn't trying to bring this up. I'm glad the MASC did. I really think that we should add this to our long-term agenda of how we're going to implement these things here.
Absolutely. Any other feedback at this time? All in favor of the motion to sign this resolution as the North School Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. unanimous, five zero. Thank you very much. So another late item that was added to our agenda earlier, Dr. Thompson emailed this out, was the calendar revision. And is Dr. Wyeth talking us through this one?
Yes, I, I, I just want to do a quick, quick little intro. So, you know, this is the last meeting. Unfortunately, the PD, you know, and, and this is a election year, so everybody is using November 3rd. But getting all the pieces to, to fit together. And, and, and universal design for learning is one of those things with inclusive practices is one of the things we need to work on. So I apologize for the late change. We're basically talking about swapping around some half-days. But still keeping them consistent in the district, but moving around so that we can actually do the PD that we really feel that we should, should do. Turn it over to Dr. Wyeth to explain what the PD is and the calendar.
Yeah, yeah. So we had hoped in September, on September 1, to capture Katie Novak. In fact, we had her booked for September 1 to do the kickoff around universal design for learning. And as this, you know, COVID situation unfolded, we realized that would not be a smart move for faculty right out of the gate when we have an entirely new year to plan for. So we looked, we scrambled to try to find other dates that were on our calendar already for Katie Novak to come. And she was booked on those dates. So that's why we're requesting that we move a couple of these half-days around a little bit so we can get her in and, and get that training done in the fall. Because we have other, other things we want to do as well. We don't want to let that sort of fall by the wayside. So in a nutshell, we're, we're hoping to swap out the October 14th day for the following Wednesday, which is October 21st. I don't anticipate there should be many problems with that. You know, it's just a matter of making sure parents, you know, get the communication that the calendar's been changed a little bit so they can plan accordingly. But that's just moving it one week. And then to finish off the training, because that was a six-day train, I mean, a six-hour training originally. And half-days, you know, we really get two and a half, three hours max. So we need another half-day. And the only one, the only times that she was available really was in December. And that February 9th could work, but it's a little late. And we really wanted to kind of, you know, have her come for, do a session, have some teachers think and do some, some work, and then revisit with, without too big a gap in between those sessions. So December 8th was something that worked on her calendar. And we don't have a half-day in December. So we thought we could, you know, seize December 8th as the half-day and eliminate the February 9th day. So that, you know, it's, it's sort of, we maintain our balance of, you know, learning time and professional development time. So that, that's basically it in a nutshell, I think. I don't think I left anything else out of there. And I'm happy to entertain questions, but, you know, I don't see it as a, will be a, a big issue for people as long as we get the communication out.
Right. And, and I do apologize for the, you know, for the last-minute request, but we've been struggling with trying to get this to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We are, admin team was, but this morning, no, yes, this morning, where we were able to sort of work out these, some of these kinks with Katie and, and the principals.
Any, yeah, May. Motion to approve this change?
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Seconded.
Hi, Dave. Thank you. Any discussion?
Actually, just wanted to speak to the motion. I, I just wanted to say that normally I would be opposed to changing the calendar this late in the game. I think, you know, families do, you know, we typically, we approved this calendar originally in February and families do count on this and, and sometimes make plans around it. But given the global pandemic and all of the disruptions in the school year, I think number one, it makes a lot of sense that the schools struggled. But I also think parents are less counting on the school calendar than, like, everybody knows everything's kind of up in the air. So I think it's okay this year to make this change.
Can we please count on the school calendar? Please, can you just tell me my kids are going back in September?
When we voted on it again, I said there should just be a master that says, "We have no idea." But there is a motion, a seconded, to approve these changes to the calendar. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous, great.
I do have a couple more things on my late agenda. I know you guys are loving me right now, but just a couple, just a couple, quick updates for the, for the committee and the community. The, the computer lab that was originally on the capital request that we took off because we had Pathways override money left over because of getting grants that we did not expect, that has been installed. And I want to make sure the committee knows that that $19,000 that the school committee had originally asked for, we were able to take off of the table to do that. So, and that is largely for the Pathways program because they do a lot of the online pieces and simulations and they needed a Windows test. The other thing that I want to just announce to the community is that we will, the school district will, we have a lot of people with a lot of vacations, so we're gonna kind of take a joint vacation. I'm calling it a soft close. Doesn't mean that no one's gonna take anything. But Thursday, the 25th through Tuesday, the 30th, the last four days of the fiscal year, because otherwise people would be either losing vacation or we would be buying it back. So we're gonna undergo a soft close. And, Madam Chair, should I, we, I'll, I'll wait for the FY budget piece for the other one. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot left on the agenda, and I know it's getting late. And you all know I am a night owl, but I'm sure we don't want to hang out here all night long. So I just want to quickly talk, talk, talk through the items and see what we still need to talk about tonight and what could possibly wait. We definitely have to talk about Dr. Thompson's valuation timeline and composite document. We have to finalize a couple of things there. Long-term agenda and meeting dates for 2020, we can talk about those things over email. We're allowed to by open meeting law, so we can bump that and discuss over email. Remote learning policies, we want to talk about. I think the transportation policy, we wanted to touch on. The school committee, there's another resolution that we should definitely sign or discuss and vote on signing tonight. Karen and Dave, the budget transfer policy cannot wait till our July meeting?
The budget transfer can't, the two?
No, the policy.
Yeah. Well, it would depend because if there's any last-minute ones that they want to transfer that are under that $25,000 and they want to spend some money, I guess it's up to you. We only have one, about one more, the 26th is when the year, the town is closing. So we can't have any requisitions after the 26th.
It's a little time sensitive, unfortunately.
Okay, that's okay. No, I, I felt that most of the policy stuff tonight was, but I wanted to check in.
The fee schedule, we could hold off on because that's really.
So I, I was thinking that, but then I wasn't sure because part of the reason we wanted to talk about the fee schedule tonight was due to the town-wide financial policies that we signed that are gonna be, I think, discussed in some fashion at town meeting. It said that we would start the fee schedule. Correct, May? Or do you think that can wait till our July meeting?
I do think it can wait till the July meeting. And I think that, you know, when we were, I, I think the fees that we were supposed to be reviewing were things like the bus fee, the athletic fee, the fine arts fee, the lunch fees, stuff like that.
Okay, so we can, we can talk through it more?
Yeah.
Next meeting, okay. So I'm, we'll move fee schedule, long-term agenda, meeting dates, we'll do over email. And everything else, we will just have fun for a little bit longer discussing tonight. So that does bring us to budget, the two budget transfers in our packet tonight. Ms. Sheridan?
Okay, I've got two, both legal fees. One is there's additional special education legal fees incurred through June to exceed the current available balance. Requesting to transfer $3,000 from the school contingency fee tech assessment as there's some money left in that account. That account has $3,058. And transferred over the school legal fees, which is in a negative balance right now. So $3,000 for that, and that's for the special education legal fees. And unfortunately, we also have the legal, the regular legal fees that also are, have been incurred through June. So that one needs $6,100 to be transferred to the legal services. And I was planning to take that out of the school admin audit because I've already incurred the amount that Tom McQuade told me for the audit, and I have some money in there. So I was gonna use that money to transfer over to legal services. So there's two of them, both legal fees, one's fed and one just the regular legal fees.
Yeah, May. Motion to approve these transfers. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. So Dr. Thompson, the FY 20 budget, I believe there was something you wanted to.
Just one, one item. We did have, due to having to cancel some PD because of the COVID shutdown and really good buying practices and negotiation practices. And I'll give Dr. Wyeth and Stephanie West a lot of credit for coming under budget with our, with our ELA program. But currently, we have $68,993 left over from the money that we asked for from the override. And I, this is money that we said we were going to spend in a certain way. We need, we're not able to spend it, you know, for the, for the PD. I would ask that the committee consider returning that to the town and ask that it go into the override stabilization. That PD is something we'd like to do, maybe two years down the road. And we could ask for it again, but instead of, you know, using it in a way that we did not ask for, I would, I would ask that you would vote to consider and make that.
Yeah. Dave, can I just ask a clarifying question? And Karen, you jump in here because I know, I think today we talked about getting Stephanie some extra ELA books to sort of expand the, the ELA adoption. Is that in those new figures that Dave just mentioned, Karen? And also the history, the grade five history books? I know those requisitions were going in today, but I don't know if the numbers are reflected in Dave's bottom line.
What they, the, when we did this spreadsheet, there was an estimate of $50,000 for additional district-wide textbooks. It looks like with the stuff that Stephanie put in, it came to.
It should be about $52,000 according to my numbers today.
$52,000. So it, it looks like it's gonna be close to that, give or take a couple thousand.
Okay, as long as, as long as people realize there's a little flex to the number, I think Dave just quoted.
Questions from the school committee?
No.
So there would need to be a motion to return that money to the town, and we are requesting that it goes back to the override stabilization fund, correct? That's your recommendation, Dr. Thompson?
That would be my recommendation, yes. So moved.
Thank you, Dave. May, do you have something to share?
Oh, I'll second, but then I'd like to just, I'm not entirely sure that we can, we can recommend that it be, you know, put in the override stabilization fund, but that's really not our decision. We can leave the money in our budget. At the end of the year, which is coming up really quick, it will roll over to free cash. And then town meeting will decide what to do with the certified free cash in the fall.
Yep.
Okay, so just as, so as long as everybody understands that, like, we can't directly put anything in.
Yep.
Override stabilization.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. All right, so the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Was there anything else with FY 20 budget tonight, Dr. Thompson? No?
No.
All right. So next on the agenda is Dr. Thompson's valuation timeline and composite document. I created a document to kind of outline what we need to decide tonight. And they link to some resources that, you know, most of us have seen before, just as a reminder and refresher to everybody. So we had determined previously that Dr. Thompson would complete and send his self-assessment and evidence of progress to us by June 30th. We had also said that we would have the individual evaluations due in July, but we didn't set a date yet, so I want to talk about what that date is for us. And then also, if it is feasible. And then also if it is feasible, that our composite document would be presented and discussed on our August fifth meeting. So timeline, then we also need to figure out who, who is going to send out the individual Google forms that we use to complete the individual evaluations and then we would need one to two people who will, excuse me, who will work on that compilation document. So thoughts, questions from the committee?
I can volunteer if someone wants to help me with doing the composite.
I'm willing to help too.
Okay. All right, so you worked well together last time, so thank you. So if Joan and Maia complete the composite document, Maia, you had generated the Google docs before, do you have it like easily saved and templated somewhere or?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. That's not a big deal, I can do the Google form.
Okay, so if Dr. Thompson gets his self-assessment by June thirtieth, which in a moment, Dr. Thompson, I just want you to remind us what that's going to entail, but if we get that on June thirtieth, how much time would everybody need to complete our individual evaluations?
I think maybe about two weeks for me. Just depends on the week, if I'm slammed or not, you know.
Yeah.
Two weeks gives me a little bit of leeway.
What are their thinking with your schedules?
I will have limited access to email that third week in July. I don't know if that impacts people in terms of the composite or Maia's, like, how we would do that, but my internet connection will be unreliable the third week of July.
The week of twentieth?
The week of the twentieth. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to the Cape and the place we stay at, sometimes the internet works and sometimes it doesn't and there's no option for a coffee shop this time. Like, I can't reliably say that I can go sit in a Starbucks for an hour or something, so.
Just tell us you don't have internet on vacation, just go.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have internet.
I mean, if we, if we had the composite for the August fifth meeting, you know, as the committee, we cannot see that composite document until that morning, so it's not that you would have to get it done the Friday before. So I guess it's just how much time does everybody feel we need after June thirtieth to write our individuals and then Maia and Joan, if we were having it presented on the fifth, how much time do the two of you need to, to work on it?
Yeah, I was, I was actually proposing that we work backwards, knowing that, you know what I mean? So like if the morning of the fifth, how much time do we think we need it to do, to do it, Maia? Knowing that I may not be able to do it that third week.
Right, I mean, I, I actually, that third week is tough for me too, so if we're meeting August fifth, I mean, I, really, I'd love to have two weekends to work on it.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, I think we'd want the individual evaluations done by Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Is that reasonable? And then, and so I don't know if maybe that means we could offer Dr. Thompson a little bit more time to do his self-assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah. Dr. Thompson, I know there's a lot on your plate right now and...
Nothing. I'm not tired and cranky at all, not at all.
Well, the self-assessment is obviously quite the document and an important document, so what is feasible for you if not June thirtieth?
I mean, the, you know, the week, I mean, I'll, I mean, I'll try to do whatever, I mean, but, I mean, I had planned I'd start working on it Monday and it hasn't happened yet, so, you know, welcome to my world. But, you know, I mean, the document is going to be speaking specifically to the standards and the, and the goals and linking, linking back or referring back to the presentations and the documents and the things that, that were shared with you throughout, throughout the year. So, you know, in, you know, the updates, you know, strategic plan updates, the progress in that, most of, most of it will be contained in that, perhaps going back to some of the agendas from the school committee meetings, you know, when things were, were presented and such. So those, that's kind of my plan, but I'd like to get a little more time to actually write about and have some, actually for the first time, have someone else look at it and say, hey, you're not talking about this, you're not talking about that, that would be helpful.
So do you think, both to you and then to the committee, if this is enough time, if you would get it to us by July tenth, if we have to the twenty-fourth, is a two-week period feasible for the committee?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm hoping it'll slow down someday. No, yeah, I don't think so either, Joan. I think it's going to speed up, yeah, no.
All right, so we'll say that you'll get us a composite document, or not a composite, a self-assessment document by July tenth and then we as a committee will fill out the individual evaluations by July twenty-fourth. So Maia, would you be able to send out the Google forms like around the tenth as well?
Sure.
Okay. And then August fifth, that morning, is when Joan and Maia are able to share the draft composite with the school committee. Anne Marie, you do not have to decide right now, but just, you know, you are welcome to be a part of this process, but you also have the ability to say that you do not want to complete the individual evaluation. You also can completely, you know, seeing from the whole process, there's, you know, a number of different ways that this can go about and I'm not putting you on the spot to decide right now. Did you have any questions for us or any thoughts at this time?
No, I'm just sitting here thinking about how, yeah, I could possibly evaluate, given the delay in the election, you know, it's, hi, how are you doing? I'd like to evaluate you.
Yeah.
Wearing things, right, does that count?
So of, of course, we will still include you on everything that goes out, you'll still get, you know, the self-assessment from Dr. Thompson and again, you can change your mind throughout this process if you, if you do want to write the individual evaluation. Okay, so the other, oh, sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Question for Dave. How's your availability? Because I mean, typically we like to sit and talk, but I guess it will be over video conference or phone just to discuss your evaluation.
Yep, just, just let me know. I, I, all of my vaca, I just, I just canceled the last of my vacation plans between, between four o'clock and, and six fifteen, so I, I got some time on my hands.
I hear that, but I'm glad to have you, thank you.
If I spent too much time with, with my family, they might, I might not survive to be evaluated, so it's probably just as well, so.
Yeah, because once Dave sends out that, that self-assessment, obviously if we have questions on it, we can reach out directly to Dr. Thompson and ask for questions or ask questions, get answers.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
We, we should talk about, and this is all recommended by the MAS C, that every time we go through this process, that we should know before we fill out the evaluation, before the composite document is written, how do we want to handle outliers? How do we want to approach the process of including comments? I believe what we did last year was if there were two, at least two people who had similar comments, then it was included in the document. So do we want to do that again? How do we want to determine proficiency ratings if everyone does not agree? And then the other question, and all this is in the notes in your packet, is do we want the individual evaluations to be shared with the committee? Those are the questions MAS C recommends we answer at this point in the process.
Well, I think the easy one, or the, I was just making a big assumption, I'm sorry. I would like to recommend, I think it worked well to have, if there were two themes, if two people brought up the theme, that it was included in the composite. That seems the least controversial or the least hard to go after. So do I need to make a motion or do people?
Yeah, why don't we just so we're all really crystal clear on what we're doing and Donna can capture it in our minutes for us?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that if Maia and I detect themes in two or more composites, two or more evaluations of the superintendent, that it gets included in a composite and that significant outliers, nope, I'm just going to stick with that and go for a win.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that, yep.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi, all right, five zero, perfect. Joan, you were on a roll, do you want to keep going or?
I don't know how to deal with outliers in a logically consistent fashion, so does someone else want to take that up?
I was actually going to take up instead the part that I do think that we want to share individual evaluations with the entire committee. I think in order for the committee to feel comfortable approving the composite document, they need to see all the pieces that went into it.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, due to open meeting law, would have to be done the morning of the fifth. So the morning of the fifth is when we would see each other's and the composite.
Yeah.
So motion by Maia to share those individual evaluations, seconded by Joan, all in favor on that?
All right.
Okay. How do we want to handle proficiency ratings? This is where it got a little tricky last year to navigate and we didn't talk about it ahead of time, so. You know, there, there's the prospect, not determined, but the prospect that there might only be four of us completing the evaluation and something could be two, too, so that's something we might want to think about.
So Dave's the tiebreaker?
Well, well, you could actually have Alec be the tiebreaker.
Yeah, it's Alec, you better treat him well.
Even for all the torture I've put him through, right.
I'm happy to contribute.
So, can, can you just, it's, it's proficient developing.
Exemplary and...
Unsatisfactory.
Unsatisfactory.
Yeah, the needs improvement and developing is kind of the same rating, yet they, in this system, it only goes in as needs improvement.
So...
Satisfactory, needs improvement slash developing, proficient, which as a reminder, which is in the notes I sent you from the MAS C, proficient is the expectation of a superintendent and then exemplary.
So I'd like to make the motion, nope, I'll just, I don't know if this is a motion or not, but proficient, I think that we should maybe start with discussing what is proficient and establish a baseline around that. And for me, I would be, I would consider that proficient is fulfilling the job description and the responsibilities outlined in the evaluation, but not going above that.
Well, the rubric spells all that out pretty clearly when we're...
Then why are we talking about it? Sorry.
In case, in case not everybody agrees and that was playing a conversation, you know, last time, so.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No, that, that's okay. I mean, this process is, is complicated, it's, it's not easy. And every time I think I understand and then I like watch a video again, I read a guideline again, I'm like, wait a minute.
And then they change the rubric.
Yep.
And they change the rubric on us, so we are, you know, we do have that updated rubric. I mean, it's also okay since we are meeting on the twenty-second and we're not saying that we want the individuals done until the twenty-fourth. If the committee wants to think about some of these and come back and finalize it on the twenty-second, because that will be before the composite is worked on, I'm okay with that. So do you want to table the rest of these questions until the twenty-second? Or are there other things that we can discuss tonight as it relates to this?
I think that makes sense to, to table it and then, like, I will, you know, have sent the forms out to everybody on the tenth, so everybody can be looking at the forms and just, you know, have this conversation about how the composite is going to go after everybody's kind of started to think about it a little bit more.
Okay.
Can I, I just want to add one more thing. I just briefly looked through, is there a rubric around the overall evaluation and those ratings? Because wasn't that where we got hung up last time? It wasn't the individual standards and the rubrics, it was the end overall evaluation. I just looked through real quick, I didn't see that.
Yeah, basically in order to be proficient, you have to be proficient in standards one and two or better.
Do we, but are we as a committee agreeing to what Dave is proposing, I guess? Or do we get a choice? We don't get a choice?
Yeah, so...
Okay, so then we don't need to talk about it, sorry.
No, no, it is confusing though because in the document that I, in the document I created, there's a link to the MAS C PowerPoint. There is Dr. Thompson goals and evidence that we revised on April fifteenth, so that revision of the goals and evidence is what we want to use in tandem with the self-assessment that he is going to give to us. So we're going to have the self-assessment, we're going to have the revised goals and evidence on, as of April fifteenth, and then you're going to look at the rubric, which I link to, but then there is at the end, like, the overall, and you are right, Joan, that is where we got stuck. And there's some guidance on that in the MAS C PowerPoint, but it's not in the DESI rubric, so it is...
Okay, it's not in the rubric, I'm not crazy.
No, but I think, I think that this is something that as we get re-affiliated with this process again and look at, you know, everything over the next, you know, the next month, we can finalize the outlier question and how to determine proficiency ratings if not everyone agrees.
I just want to put out there so that everybody knows, we are talking about a twenty-seven page rubric, so it's not like the fact that we don't have these at the tips of our fingers is not, you know, we're not paying attention, it is twenty-seven pages of rubric with four columns on each page, four columns and multiple rows on each page of individual standards.
Right. If this was easy, everybody, everybody'd be doing it.
I'm just saying, I sound like an idiot, but when you look at it, it's probably like, what's twenty, like, it's probably close to a thousand, like, or you know what I mean? Like, almost five hundred things, a thousand things that we're going through and evaluating on.
It's, it's not easy and then you have the MAS C and you have the MAS S and then you have DESI and they all put out different variations of guidance, it's very, very complicated.
Which is why, which is why we picked certain standards to, to look at, so you, because it's, I mean, it's very difficult, you're not with me every day, sometimes you count your blessings with that, Alex, not so lucky, but, you know, so you can't really see a lot of what I do, it's mainly, you know, at the meeting, so, and it's, and it's tough, that's why you have to pick certain ones you're going to focus on, so.
Okay, if, if as you're reviewing all of this and preparing, you have questions on, you know, the procedure, you know, funnel it to Dave, but, you know, if applicable, I can always follow up, you know, with Dorothy Presser at the MAS C, if it's like a procedural, you know, not how should we rate Dave on this, but what is the overarching guidance? We can always follow up with MAS C. All right, everybody comfortable with where we are on that topic for tonight? Yes, okay. So again, if you can, just look at the long-term agenda that I started and also the meeting dates that Dave, Dr. Thompson and I proposed for 2020 and 2021, especially the meeting dates, if you could just shoot me an email, fingers crossed all these dates work and we can just get it posted, but if we need to talk about other dates, we can do that offline. So, policy update, let's start with the budget transfer policy and Joan and I, at the last policy subcommittee on Friday, asked Karen to put together a brief presentation because the last time we talked about the budget transfer policy, we realized there was some confusion on what this, you know, very specific policy is designed to do, but also how it relates to the larger budget management policies, which is all of Section D in our manual. So Dave, are you running the presentation for Karen on the fiscal policies that she put together earlier today?
I can.
Yes, you, you are.
The answer is yes, whatever she needs. Let me bring those up. I will present. I am going to, over here, share, and then I gotta go over there. All right, how's that, how's that looking?
It's opening in.
That's good, so you can go to page one, so this is newer public schools fiscal accountability is what I am calling it. So I start off with what's a budget. A budget is an estimated expenditure plan for the cost of education. I kind of describe a budget as a snapshot in time, so at the time the budget was developed, you take, you're estimating what you think the cost is going to be for the next fiscal year. And if you can go to slide two, Dave? Budget transfers, the law requires that an appropriation must be available before an expenditure is made and since we know that a budget is an estimated expenditure plan, sometimes conditions change. Unexpected expenses arise and thus the need for a budget transfer. The COVID-19 shutdown is a prime example of the situations that arise unexpectedly requiring expenditures to made, to be made that the district did not anticipate. After the fact, budget transfers are inappropriate, so it's... So it's, it's of utmost importance to have a good, sound budget transfer policy in place. Um, next slide, Dave? Uh, so the updated budget transfer policy, um, that, uh, we worked on at the policy subcommittee. Um, the current budget transfer policy, um, appears to be too restricting. Uh, it can slow down the purchasing process. Um, and the hope of the updated budget transfer policy is to keep the school committee abreast of the need for transfers, um, but continue to have sound approval processes in place. Um, and also allow superintendent to have a role in the approval process, thus improving the efficiency and the timeliness. Um, so the, we'd like to keep that, the requests between the major DSE four-digit function codes, um, would go, if you want a budget transfer that's going to go outside of those codes, then that will go to the school committee for approval. Um, transfers between these account lines, um, within the DSE four-digit function code areas um, that exceed a $25,000 threshold, those would also go to the school committee for approval. But under that $25,000 threshold, I were recommending that the superintendent has some approval here. And so he would approve those and then they, they would be reported to the school committee on a monthly basis. Um, and we feel this updated budget transfer policy would improve the efficiency and timeliness, but again, uh, keep in the sound approval process in place. Um, so with this presentation, I thought I'd go through a little bit of that accountability. Um, so to see that even with the budget transfers, um, we still have a lot of, um, accountability in place, checks and balances. So how are we going to monitor this, monitor this budget and increase accountability? Um, we have consistency of the year-to-date budget reports. Um, we have improved internal controls, we've improved the checks and balances. We have a tighter rein on the collection of fees and we have a collaboration with the school in town. Um, I had, I'd like to really stress that there has been an improvement in the collaboration with the school, school in town. Um, and if you look at my cell phone and all the cell phone numbers that I have of the town members, you'll know that, um, there's a lot of communication going on, um, with that. Uh, the next slide, Dave? Uh, so fiscal accountability, um, we have the budget status reports, um, we have the quarterly financial reports. Um, we're, we're including all funds, we're including the general fund, we're including the special revenue accounts, um, we're including revolving and grants. Um, the, with this, um, but new budget transfer policy, we would do the monthly budget transfer reports. Um, right now, we're in the process of working on the policies and procedures manual. Um, this will help not only with, um, you know, having people know more about the procedures in the financial section, but also to help train the staff. Um, we want to make sure we follow the state procurement rules. Um, we have a designated, designated purchasing agent, um, at the town, Kathy Connie. Um, I just worked with her, um, last week on getting some bid documents, um, together for athletic trainer for the next year. So that we're following the procurement. Um, she's MCPPO certified, um, because we're required to be, to be competitive with contracts, bids and quotes, and follow the 30D rules or regulations. Um, we want to improve our internal controls. Um, so the segregation of duties is one thing. Uh, for example, we put in place that, uh, with the deposits, um, uh, one person may bring in the deposit. Uh, they bring it up to one of my other staff members who counts it to make sure that it's, um, accurate. And then it goes to the town. Um, so a little bit of segreg, segregation of duties, one person might do one thing, enter it in. The other person is checks and balances. Uh, the checks and balances, again, we're trying to get that in place where, um, there's more checks and balances for not only the deposits. Uh, this week was, um, no, last week was the very large payroll, end-of-year payroll, which Cheryl, who does the payroll for me, in the other years, it was just her with nobody to check it. So this year, um, I had, um, one of the, the other staff members, the accounting assistant, she was her check and balance on the payroll. And we also had, um, one of the town, um, members helped with checking the benefits for her. Um, and it not only helps to improve to not have as many mistakes happen, but kind of ease a little bit of Cheryl not to be the only one checking on that very large payroll. I've done it in my, in my history when I did payroll and it can be very daunting task. Um, cross-training, um, I've been working with Beverly, um, another one of the staff members in grant management, um, to help her training her with that. Um, I already have my other girl Rhonda, who is already proficient in that. I've got two new staff members, I mean, two of my staff members that are beginning training on payroll next week, because I want to be able to have, um, somebody else know the payroll and, um, allow poor Cheryl to go on vacation once in a while. Um, I've got, uh, several people who now know how to enter the deposits into the MUNA system. And we've also got the workflow of approvals, approvers in the MUNA system. So if you put in a requisition or an invoice, it's not just approved by one person. It goes through a chain, which would go, um, from the person who starts the requisition. It next goes into, um, my business department to check. It goes to myself to, um, for the approval for the school and then it goes over to the town. So you've got it hitting the, um, purchasing department at the, the town, it goes to the county department of the town. And then that's when it goes into the APO. And the invoice, invoice, when it becomes an invoice, also has that line, um, in it. So it's not just one person that's, oh, looking over these invoices and, um, requisitions. Um, go to the next slide, Dave? Uh, fiscal accountability should not only be for the general fund, it should also continue in all funds, including the grants and the revolving funds. Um, it should strive not only for accountability, but also transparency and accuracy. Uh, with the grants and the revolving funds, um, we have a new grant manager who's, who's great, Patty, she's doing great. Uh, we have, I have a girl that, uh, like I indicated before, that I'm training on grants. So we have a bookkeeper for the grants. And we also have another girl that I hired part-time, 10 hours a week, who is doing all the receivables. Both been great. Uh, that helped with the checks and balances and improved the reporting. Again, we're training the staff on the grants and revolving. Uh, the policies and procedures, I just finished the, um, the draft of the policies and procedures for the grants, um, and revolving. I sent that over, uh, to Teresa and Dave today, um, to review. Um, we continually review the state funding, we've got a tighter rein on the collection of fees. And again, we've got a collaboration of the school in town. Um, and then the final slide, Dave? Uh, teamwork, I'll end with a quote about what I believe is of utmost importance, and that is teamwork. So without teamwork, it's very difficult to achieve any good results. So, um, this quote, teamwork is the ability to work together toward a common vision, the ability to direct individual accomplishments toward organizational objectives. And it is a fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results. So with that, I would like to thank my team because they worked extremely hard this year. So they, they know who they are and I appreciate them, so just wanted to make sure I got that in.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, so, you know, again, at the last meeting, there are a lot of questions coming up around larger, you know, budget management. And, um, when we met as the policy subcommittee to look at the budget transfer, um, you know, Joan and Dr. Thompson and Karen, I just thought it might be helpful to give that, you know, high-level overview, again, not only to the committee, but to the community. Um, and if you look at the notes that I, I put in the packet, um, I did have a call with Dorothy Presser at the MASC on Monday about a number of different policy things, but one was this area of budget. And, you know, through the conversation with her, um, I did realize there's a number of our, uh, budget policies we should probably be looking at soon and they're listed in my notes for you. But there are broad fiscal management goals policy. And then there are the policies around accounting and reporting, audits, purchasing and payment procedures. Um, so I know Joan loves working with me on the policy subcommittee and, uh, there's even more policies I'm going to tell you in the next conversation we need to work on. Um, but I do think as a policy subcommittee, we need to work on those this summer. Um, but tonight we do have in front of us the budget transfer authority policy once more. So questions, feedback, edits at this time? Yeah, Maya?
Um, so I like the edits that have been made to this document, but, um, as I went, as I reviewed this document again, I realized that I had been a little bit confused at our last meeting about what it actually meant because it refers to the, the major accounts and it says the four-digit accounts ending in zero, zero. And then there's a chart below and the chart only has like the, the eight major categories, like really major categories, like instructional services, which is about $37 million of our budget. And, but, but that's actually the, the, the major accounts according to this policy are just the ones that are zero, zero. Not, so it's not the, the thousands, it's the hundreds. And so if you look at the hundreds, it's, um, for like the 2,000, it's district-wide leadership is one section, school building and leadership is another section, instructional cert, teaching services, instructional materials and equipment, um, guidance and testing. So it's more restrictive. Like, there's, there's more controls there than I thought there were just based on that function code listing. So I find the function code listing just a little, um, misleading and maybe not helpful to this policy.
Um, Karen, can you, can you speak why you, um, added the function code listing at the end? I, I know the intent was to be helpful, so can you just walk us through like why, why you had added that?
Um, why I added the listing of the function code? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like the, the policy is largely based on the model MASC policy that we had looked at. And then we added in some things, you know, from the committee's, uh, feedback from two weeks ago. But the very end of the policy where you had listed the function code and then those eight areas, you know, the 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, et cetera. Um, why, why were you putting those there?
Um, I, I guess I, the way that I thought it was, was that you could transfer with, within these categories. So if you were going to go outside of district leadership and administration and cross over to like other school services, then that would be, that would require you to bring it to the school committee for approval. Because you're crossing over to a completely different area. I guess that's how I was reading it.
I don't think that's actually what the, I think the policy is a little bit more restrictive than that. I think it's saying if you're going out of anything in the four, the major accounts that they describe as the four-digit accounts ending in zero, zero. So I think say within the 1,000 categories, if you move from 1,200, which is district administration, to 1,400, finance and administrative services, that would require school committee approval. But if you're making a change within finance and administrative services, then we don't need to approve. At least that's how I read the policy.
Um, I, I, I guess the way I read it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Teresa, when we were talking about, I thought if I went outside of, if I stayed within the district leadership and administration area, then we could move the money around as long as it was not over the 25,000. But maybe this isn't reading that way.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm, I'm now confused again. I thought I understood everything that we have revised and the intent, but I hear Maya's question, um.
I think, I think if it, if it's meant to say what you're saying, it should say the four-digit accounts ending in zero, zero, zero.
Yeah, that's probably what it should be, the zero, 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 because that's how I, that's how I thought that we meant the policy to be. You just couldn't, if you crossed over, because that's a completely different area. So if, if you're going from maintenance of plant, you really need to get an approval by the school committee if you want to move that money up to administration. So that's kind of how I read it. So maybe we just added, um, the other zero and that would be more indicating what I thought we meant.
I actually really like it better the way it's actually written. Because I feel like, you know, moving money within instructional supplies and materials and stuff like that, I've got no problem. But, uh, you know, if we're moving money out of salaries into instructional supplies, then that maybe needs to come to school committee.
Okay.
And that level would still be way more flexible than our current policy. And it would be in keeping with what MASC is recommending.
Yeah, the language in here, like, uh, the second paragraph, all requests for transfers between the major accounts, um, the four-digit accounts ending in zero, zero, that is the MASC, like, exact language. That, that came from their model policy. Um, so if the end of the policy, the way it was, the function code listing is in the thousands, if that part is removed, Maya and everyone else, do you feel then the policy is in its entirety what we want it to say and it doesn't conflict?
I'm then comfortable with it.
You said you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, if we remove that function code listing.
Okay.
Okay, I think Joan's saying yes as well.
Thumbs up.
Okay. So then if we have the policy through the last sentence of all funds in the general account not expended by the close of the fiscal, fiscal year will be returned to the municipality, period. Get rid of that listing. That is what we're recommending as the policy. Um, so making those edits, is that your motion?
Yes, yes. I, I move that we, you know, we make that edit and approve the policy.
Okay, is there a second? Joan?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will edit that and get it in the policy manual. Um, so at, at our last policy subcommittee meeting, we reviewed the transportation policy, which is in your packet. Um, we reviewed it because this was one of the policies that both MASC and Masbo had recommended due to, you know, COVID and all the unknowns going on, um, that committees review it. Um, the policy you have in your packet is the policy that we have had in the district since 2018 is the last time it was updated. Uh, we did not, as a policy subcommittee, make any changes, but we wanted you to be aware that it was recommended that we look at it, that we did review it. One of the things that the MASC and Masbo both recommended to make sure was in your policy was clause number six. So number six says, for students other than those in kindergarten or those in grades one to six that live more than two miles from school, ridership is not guaranteed. Bus routes will be established only if sufficient funding and ridership is available. This would minimize the chance that lightly-filled bus routes will have to be run. So it was that type of clause that MASC and Masbo wanted to ensure districts had in place and we do have it in place. Um, but are there questions or concerns from the committee on this transportation policy? Dr. Thompson, I know transportation has been a bit of a hot topic on our social media.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's been something that's come up around, uh, around bus fees and, and what have you. And, and I have to remind everybody out there that the bus fees do, it's not a pay, it's not a pay-per-ride Uber sort of thing. It's a, it's an offset. It only, the bus fees only offset 18.8% of our total bus costs. Um, you know, it, so, you know, we did not, you know, we, we need to know who's going to want to ride the bus. That's why we did put it up there, especially if it is a reduced rate or a free rate depending on, um, depending on, uh, economic situations. We need to have that information ahead of time because we're going to need to figure out who's riding the bus. And I said on, uh, Facebook, was it yesterday? It seems like last week, but Facebook Live yesterday, that, you know, if we needed to move, once we had that guidance out, if it was drastically different, we need to move it back a week, the, you know, we would, that people could wait until the 29th and, and register online, that that is enough to let us know, uh, they could wait. Um, but we're, you know, honestly, we really need to know who's going to be riding the bus. There are people who will decide that they don't want their kids exposed and might not ride the bus. Um, and there is, you know, the possibility that we might have to say, if we don't know by such and such a time, we cannot guarantee a seat for you on the bus. Um, and, you know, this, unfortunately, this policy is important because we do not need to guarantee, um, you know, bus rides, uh, under certain conditions. And I, I hope we're not in that, in that place. Um, but we need to, you know, look at, be prepared for, for all options, so. Um, as much as it pains me to say that, it's not something, you know, because it's a hardship. Um, and I get that, but, you know, wouldn't, you know, there are people talking about, well, if I'm only riding the. riding the bus half the time, why am I paying the fee? And the reality is, we have to run the buses. So we're going to be running 16 buses, 13 buses, whatever it is, every day, and they might not be filled. So again, it's an offset. You know, we're trying to be consistent with what those fees are, and I and I understand all that. But, you know, it really isn't, it isn't calling an Uber and getting a ride. You're not paying for a ride, you're offsetting the cost of the bus. And it is only 18.8% of our total bus contract. So it is difficult, I get that. Unfortunately, this is not places we wanted to wanted to be at any point in time.
Yeah, Emery.
So question, just I was trying to get wrap my head around the bus situation as well. My kid rides the bus. But I think what I'm hearing a lot on, at least on social media and from friends, is that they just want to have the clarity around what's going to happen in September before they actually sign up for the bus. So having said that, like, what is our what's the drop dead time to get people signed up so that we get the appropriate bus routes and get that information, you know, so that we're not scrambling at the last second or we have to, you know, mess around with contracts? And of course, the late fee, I think every single person said, I'll just pay the late fee, I'll just sign up at the last possible moment. But what is our drop dead timeline?
It depends on how difficult is it it's going to be. It depends on what we're going to start with, but I would definitely, I mean, my guesstimate at this point, and it's just a guess, is that we would need to know by sometime by the end of July, otherwise, we would not be able to take on riders after that point.
I think that's important information for like, I think that's that the public knowing that, you know, and having that information helps a lot.
Right, but that's just me guessing and saying, okay, I'm going to need my transportation department's going to need a month to put that together and do bus routes. And depending on where the kids are, we might have to redesign, which we really have not had to do in the last 20 years. But if if we have to do that, I I would guess at least a month to do that, at least. But that but that's a guess because I don't know. And this is the frustrating part, and I real and, you know, I'm as frustrated as everybody else, trust me. You know, I don't know whether I can put 30 kids on that bus or 40 kids on that bus.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole 75, am I able to put 35 on there or is it only 20? I mean, you know, and then we have to say, you know, we have to get out the measuring stick and figure it out. And then, you know, you know, the bus contract's the bus contract. We do have the ability to hire, add more buses, but but a bus for the year is about $75,000 to our budget.
I think it's important, too, for the for parents to understand that if the guidelines change mid-year and we go back to a full-time model and you didn't sign up for the bus. Just as a just as an aside, I know there's been a lot of questions about, well, part-time, full-time, half-days, every other week. But if we go back to a full-time model in November, I know this is like pie in the sky, but November, now you're out of bus.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, you know, I mean, you know, and maybe, who knows? I mean, I I would think that that November would would be pretty, I mean.
Optimistic.
I was going to use a much stronger word like delusional, but, you know. Even even if we develop vaccine, best case scenario, it it's not going to be ready for, don't say this to Joan, but it's going to be, you're not going to be using it until January, February. I mean, if that's if everything goes perfect.
That would be the fastest vaccine ever.
Yeah, it would be the fact, and we have better technology now, so we will be hopeful with that, but not not that good. And you don't want to be giving a vaccine that is going to cause more harm than good.
I work in pharmaceutical research and I am not holding out much hope for that.
No, you are booted from the committee, Emery. You are not allowed to say this thing.
Heavy dose of reality.
You didn't notice the clause that that when you signed your pledge that said that you have to allow me to preserve my fantasy?
Okay, Joan, mute me. I don't think.
Exactly.
You know, we had that with, you know, with the polio vaccine where there were live cultures actually given to and, you know, we gave, so it needs to be safe before that happens to it. I'm not trying to scare people, but, you know, I won't even get it get into the treatment side. So I, you know, I suspect that we're going to spend a majority of the year in some sort of blended model that's just based on what I'm seeing in California, that's what what we're seeing over in Europe. You know, they are opening the schools, but they're they're staggering what they're doing. You know, there might be some suggestions for staggering different ways, but anything else, I mean, there are are other ways to do it, but no one's saying, here's the money to do it this way, which is better. And that's where the problem is, you know, as a as a society, we, you know, and not that we shouldn't bail out small businesses or large businesses or what have you, but, you know, where is we're talking about a totally different landscape. And and the federal government has been sitting on the Heroes Act and the funding to actually look at doing that. And it is wrong. It is short-sighted. You cannot really truly open an economy without opening the schools. So, you know, anyways, I'll grab my soapbox.
Maya.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I completely understand why people who are looking at writing a $275 check are saying, you know what, I'd rather like, I'll just wait a little bit longer and and write a $300 check later once I know more. And and Dr. Thompson's right that we would love to know more now and and, you know, and if we had any more information, we would absolutely share it. But I think every I do want to remind people that part of the reason for that $25 late fee is to incentivize the people who qualify for free busing because they live more than two miles from the school and they're, you know, grades one to six. Like, we are absolutely required to bus them, and we want to incentivize all of them to put their names on the list now so that we can start to wrap our heads around how do we guarantee busing for those kids if we can only put 13 to 20 kids on each bus? And so that's really the reason why we need that information now. We're kind of between a rock and a hard place in many ways.
Many ways, yeah. And I think it's important people know we're not making a profit off of this bus fee that parents are being asked to pay and that if we have the busing and we can bus them and it's safe to do so, then we will bus kids. But the way the policy stands is that, again, unless they're students in kindergarten or those grades one to six that live more than two miles away from school, which is the law in Massachusetts, that ridership is not guaranteed. So at this time, we're not making any changes to the policy, but we just wanted to have the chance to talk it through and share some of these details with the community. So almost done with policy, almost almost done with the meeting. MASC did just put out a brand new policy that they're recommending that school committees adopt on remote learning. So in your packet, there is a policy, I I put in the policy newsletter, but it's the entire policy language in it. So it's remote learning, IHBHE. We reviewed this as a policy subcommittee last week, and along with Dr. Thompson, we are recommending that the policy itself, again, IHBHE, be voted on and approved. But then you'll see that there is also an addendum that goes with it. We are not recommending at this time for the addendum to be approved because we think that Dr. Thompson needs to work on that with all the stakeholders with the addendum. Just as a reminder to the committee, because this is a brand new policy, if we do vote on approval of it tonight, it does have to go on the website for at least two weeks for public comment, and then we would have to have a second approval vote at our next meeting. But is there questions or feedback with the remote learning policy that MASC drafted and recommends we adopt? Yeah, Maya.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thanks, Joan. Any further discussion? Hi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero, great. So we will get that up on the website. It will go back on our July 22 meeting for another vote. And Dr. Thompson, you will work on the addendum portion and bring that back to us on July 22 as well?
Yes, that might be that might be something for August, once we finish developing some things, but I guess.
You'll talk to me about 100 times before then, so we'll figure out. Perfect, thank you. So another resolution that is in your packet that also came from MASC, you know, I do have to tell all of you in the community that MASC is doing some really amazing work right now. I have attended four webinars that they've done recently. They've all been informative and phenomenal, and they're really taking a leadership role, as they always do, but a leadership role and a lot of advocacy. So this resolution, a chapter before the meeting, 36 other school committees have now adopted this. When I first put it in the packet the other day, only 18 school districts adopted it, but now 36 have. And this is a resolution regarding COVID-19 state funding. So again, I'm just going to read it quickly. So this resolution says, whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. If we approve this tonight, respectfully, the Norwood School Committee. Yeah, Dave and Tanya.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Thanks, Joan. Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, all right, we will be the 37th school committee to sign it, and I will sign it and also get it to MASC so they can update their their, what's the word I'm looking for? Not tracker, a much more elegant word, but.
Yeah, we know what you mean.
All right, thank you. The words are totally gone at this point. Real quickly, and we will dive into this more over the summer. I did have some people in the community reach out to me over the last week with concerns around equity and diversity and inclusion in their curriculum, and I've shared all this feedback with Dr. Thompson already. But when I started to hear from people, I did start to look at our policies. This was another area that I had talked to Dorothy about, Dorothy Presser at MASC on Monday. And again, I know we voted last meeting to enter into that contract with MASC, which we're waiting on them sending us for the policy audit. It is very, very much needed. But there are some policies that I don't think can wait 18 to 24 months for that whole audit process to be completed. And I listed them in my notes for you in the packet. But there are three policies related to instruction and curriculum that the MASC put out in 2016 that somehow Norwood missed and we don't have in our policy manual. One is the reconsideration of instructional resources, and this is all around if there is a resource that is controversial or outdated, a process of how do you determine that? There's another policy around school ceremonies and observances, so what can be celebrated and how in your schools? And then there's a policy they put out on educational equity. So I do think we have to look at those three first. But then there are six other policies all related to instruction and curriculum that were updated in 2016, and they're not in our manual, they're last looked at in 2003. And then there's four more policies with the help of Dorothy, talking to her on Monday, I realize are also very much outdated and and do come into a lot of the conversations in the current climate around, again, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So Joan and I will be working on those over the summer as well. If you, you know, you can go to our policy manual, you're welcome to look at those. If you have any feedback that you want to funnel to us or to Dr. Thompson, please do. Otherwise, we will be bringing them forward over the next couple of meetings. Everyone okay? I just closed the agenda. I think we're at the end, right? Okay, so one more thing that I don't think is going to take long, Dr. Thompson, the tech board representative for the next year?
Yep, yearly, we have to appoint the board board representative from the Norwood Schools to the tech board. I did do that last year. I am willing to continue if the committee would like me to continue, if someone would like to take over. That's fine, too. The meetings are on Friday mornings at like 8:15 over in Walpole.
And it's once a month, right, Dr. Thompson?
Pretty much, yes. Yeah.
Dave and Tanya.
Motion to keep Dr. Thompson in his position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
And Dave, I'll I'll bring you the breakfast that you're missing, not going there physically.
Thanks, you're all right. I'll order my eggs easy over, okay?
Awesome.
So I don't believe we have any donations tonight, correct? Okay, so school committee addenda. Dave and Tanya, did you have anything this evening?
No comments this time, thank you.
Thank you. Joan?
I was like, I'm muted now.
I just wanted to welcome Anne Marie to the committee. Glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Anne Marie, at the end of every meeting, we have an opportunity for addenda where if there's anything you want to, you know, share or express or celebrate, this is your opportunity to do so. Did you have anything that you wanted to to share with us tonight?
No, I just want to say, you know, that I'm really glad to be here and I'm excited to work with you guys and I have some big shoes to fill. And yeah, thanks for voting me in, guys.
And what an initiation with a long meeting. You know, we were getting better for a while with shorter meetings, but there was a time three years ago when Mara and I were first on that we were going to like midnight, remember that, Maya? So we're not going back there, but we will be going till 11 regularly either. But yes, Anne Marie, welcome. We're so happy to have you join us. And then it's a quick announcement for the community that over the summer, the food services program will be continuing, the breakfast and lunch at the five elementary schools. Thank goodness, the USDA put through a waiver, extended the waiver, so we're able to still have all five of those sites from 11 to 1 Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Eli Norris told me that it'll be closed Friday, July 3 for the holiday. But if you go on Wednesday, you're going to get meals to get you through all of that. And it will be served every Monday, Wednesday, Friday through Friday, August 21st. So I wanted to make sure the community knew of that. So at this time, we do have to go into executive session. There are some contract negotiations that we have to go into. I know, I see all your faces. We will only be resuming to adjourn. So is there a motion to go into executive session, resume to adjourn, and that would be it?
So moved.
Second by Dave. Okay, so you have to poll everybody. Maya?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
MASC as well. All right, well, good night to everybody in the community, and I will see all of you very soon in our next meeting.
Yay.
Thank you.